Can you hear me? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our Tuesday, July 5th Clay County Plan and Zoning Meeting. Few housekeeping rules, please. Tonight, we will hear nine cases. We will begin with a report from the plan and zoning staff that will summarize each case prior to any discussion the board members may have. We will then ask the applicant to step up to the podium to ask or answer any questions and present support of their application. We ask the applicant to begin by stating their name and address for the record as these meetings are recorded. We will then ask for any public participation that may support the case being heard, and then anyone that may oppose the case being heard. Again, asking any participant to begin by stating their name and address. Please remember, the topic of discussion needs to remain pertinent to the case being heard. The purpose of the Planning and Zoning Board is to hear the cases and make recommendations to the Clay County Commission. The Commission will review and decide the cases heard tonight on July 20th, 2022, at 3:00 PM in this room. And could we begin tonight with a roll call of attendance?
Yes, Chairman. Terry Griffin.
Present.
David Rotis.
Present.
Mike Brinkley.
Present.
Brad Scarlett.
Present.
Marvin Davis.
Present.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Present. And could we have a motion to approve the minutes of our June 7th meeting as presented?
I'll move to approve.
Very well. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve.
David Rotis.
Approve.
Terry Griffin.
Approve.
Mike Brinkley.
Approve.
Brad Scarlett.
Obstand.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve.
Motion carries.
The first case we will hear tonight is case number July 22-138 RZ/P. And could we have a staff report, please?
Chairman, I would like to add the staff report to the official record.
So be it.
Alrighty. Our first case is a rezoning in preliminary. The proposed subdivision is named Rex's Place. This property currently sets at 35, almost 36 acres, that are unplanted, and it's currently zoned agricultural. The applicant is proposing a three-lot subdivision that ranges from 5 to 20 acres. Lot 1 has an existing house on the, and is, that one is going to be zoned R1 or residential rule. Lot 2 is zoned R5 or residential ranchette, excuse me. Both have an agricultural land preservation. Lot 3 will remain zoned ag and does not require an agricultural land preservation due to the size of the property. There is, on the southeast corner of the property, there is an electrical easement that runs through it. This property is located in the rural low-density tier. It is also located within a mile of City of Liberty. We sent a case review but haven't heard a response back from Liberty. The residential uses within the rural low-density tier allows for rural density, which is one dwelling unit per 20 acres, or subdivision of five-plus acre lots, provided a percentage of the land is preserved. In this case, is in agricultural land preservation. This would be the, this would be the surrounding area here. As you can see here, the city limits of Liberty. We have some smaller lots along over here, some other subdivisions here. This is the rezoning criteria. As staff believes this meets the criteria set forth by the Land Development Code. We published this case in the Courier Tribune. We sent out certified letters to any adjoining property within 1,000 feet. We posted a rezoning sign on the property. So in cases like this, we typically reach out to multiple outside agencies. The first one on our list was the highway department. They indicated that the existing driveway is in good condition. Lots 2 and 3 both have adequate access. Water District 5 stated that they can provide services. Clay County Health Department gave preliminary and final approval and the Fishing River Fire District serves this property. Staff is recommending approval with the following conditions, which include changes to the recording copies of the plat and that the pond shall be inspected by NRCS or a licensed engineer before the recording of the final plat with any suggested repairs or, that are completed. Staff would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners might have, and the applicants are also present.
Alright, very well. Thank you, Shane. Do any board members have questions for staff? Would the applicant or the applicant's representative step to the podium, please? State your name and address.
Steve Rhodes, 1152 White Oak Lane, Liberty, Missouri. I'm here representing Rexon Maryland Rhodes, the owner of the property.
Mr. Rhodes, do you have anything you'd like to present that supports your application? Any additional information?
No, other than the pond assessment's been completed. I'm just waiting for the report.
Okay. And you understand the staff's report?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any questions for the board or for staff?
Nope.
Okay. Alright, thank you, sir. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? You can be seated, sorry. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? Would you state your name and address, please?
Andy Marquez, 8211 Northeast Center of Polian Street.
Could you also turn on your microphone, please? Just push the button so that they're like you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Who here in this audience behind me is here to oppose the cell tower going up?
Ma'am, we're, this is a...
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a different issue.
Got you, got you. No worries.
Your turn will come. Be patient. If there's no further discussion from the audience or the board, I would call for a motion to approve the rezoning of Rex's Place.
I'll move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Very well. Okay, roll call vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve.
David Rotis.
Approve.
Terry Griffin.
Approve.
Mike Brinkley.
Approve.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve. And I think we can roll right into the preliminary plat that Shane's already gone over. And I would call for a motion to approve the preliminary plat of Rex's Place with the attachments in Exhibit A.
I'll move to approve with conditions.
Very well. Could you have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve with conditions.
David Rotis.
Approve with condition.
Terry Griffin.
Approve with conditions.
Mike Brinkley.
Approve with condition.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve with condition.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve with conditions.
Motion carries.
The next case we'll have this evening is July 22-139F. And could we have a staff report, please?
Chairman, I'd like to add the staff report to the official record.
So be it.
Let's see here. This is the final plat of the, of the case we just heard. We believe that it is compliant with the approved preliminary plat and meets Section 151-3.6D of the 2011 Land Development Code. Our recommendation is approval with two conditions: changes to the recording copy of the plat and inspection of the pond. And as the applicant indicated that the inspection has been done, we're just waiting for the report. If the, staff would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners might have, and the applicant is also present.
Alright. Thank you, Shane. Do any of the board members have questions for staff? Would the applicant please step up to the podium, state your name and address?
Steve Rhodes, 1152 White Oak Lane, Liberty. I'm here on behalf of Rexon Maryland Rhodes, the owners of property.
Alright. Mr. Rhodes, do you have anything that you'd like to present that would support your application?
I do not at this time.
You understand the staff's report?
I do.
Okay. Do you have any questions for staff or the board?
I do not.
Okay. Very well. You can be seated, sir. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? With no further discussion, I would call for a motion to approve the final plat of Rex's Place with the conditions set out in Exhibit A attached.
I'll move to approve with conditions.
Very well. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve with conditions.
David Rotis.
Approve with conditions.
Terry Griffin.
Approve with conditions.
Mike Brinkley.
Approve with condition.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve with condition.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve with conditions. Motion carries. The next case we'll hear this evening is case number July 22-140RZ/F. Could we have a staff report, please?
Chairman, I'd like to add the staff report to the official record.
So be it.
This case is a replant of a previously platted subdivision or subdivision, excuse me. This was platted back in December of 2005. It consists of about 20 and a half acres. It's zoned agricultural, and there is currently an existing house on the property. The proposed subdivision is two lots total. Lot 1 being zoned R5 or residential ranchette, and the other lot being zoned R1. Both will have an agricultural land preservation. There is a blue line stream along the north part of Lot 2, and it kind of runs along the property line of Lot 1A. This property falls under Natural Resources Tier. At the 2008 comprehensive plan, the intent is to support continued agricultural uses in areas beyond near and long-term urban services extensions. The residential uses within the Natural Resources Tier allow for rural density of one dwelling unit per 20-plus acres or subdivision of five-plus acre lots, provided a percentage of the land is preserved, in this case, in agricultural land preservation, which that is on the, on the plat. This is the surrounding area. As you can see here, we got, it comes off of CC Highway. That's a MODOT maintained road. C Highway over here to the west, and this is the Clinton County line to the north here. Staff believes this meets the rezoning criteria. The process, we published this in the Courier Tribune. We property owners within 1,000 feet are sent certified letters. Rezoning sign was posted on the site. So on this one, we reach out to multiple agencies. Since this is coming off a MODOT maintained road, they have indicated that they do not oppose the division of property as long as it has a provided shared access from the existing driveway. That really just, they didn't see that there was any good enough line of sight other than where the existing driveway is, so they are going to do a shared agreement with that if that lot were to sell. But there would be a shared agreement included with that. See here. Water District 3 stated that they don't have any issues providing services. Clay County Health Department gave preliminary and final approval, and the whole area Fire Protection District serves these properties. Staff has recommended approval with two conditions: changes to the recording copies of the plat and a shared driveway agreement as approved by MODOT. Staff would be happy to answer any questions commissioners might have on this as well, and the applicants are also present.
Alright, thank you, Shane. Do any of the board members have any questions for staff? If the applicant or the applicant's representative is present, could you step to the podium, please? Could you state your name and address? Can you turn the microphone on? Yep?
It's Tiffany Crockett. I'm representing Jay and myself. Our address is 13600 County Road CC in Halt, Missouri.
Ms. Crockett, do you have anything to present that would support your application?
We understand the provisions that the Commission has set forth for our replat, and we're just simply dividing. We're hoping to downsize. Our boys are grown and gone, and...
Alright, very well. Does any of the board members have questions for the applicant? Alright, very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can be seated.
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? And with no further discussion, I would call for a motion to approve the rezoning and the final plat of Crockett Edition, replat Lot 1 of Crockett Edition 2005, with the conditions attached as set out in Exhibit A.
And Chairman, just be clear, we'll do a vote on the rezoning and then a separate vote on the final.
Alright, my bad. Would call for a motion to approve the rezoning of the replat Lot 1 of Crockett Edition 2005.
I'll move to approve.
Very well. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve.
David Rotis.
Approve.
Terry Griffin.
Approve.
Mike Brinkley.
Approve.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve.
Motion carries.
Anything? We can roll right into the final plat. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I would call for a motion for the approval of the final plat of the replat Lot 1 of Crockett Edition 2005 with the conditions in Exhibit A attached.
I'll move to approve with conditions.
Very well. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve with conditions.
David Rotis.
Approve with conditions.
Terry Griffin.
Approve with conditions.
Mike Brinkley.
Approve with condition.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve with conditions.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve with conditions.
Motion carries.
The next case we'll hear this evening is July 22-141CUP. And could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman. Would like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
So we have two cell towers on our caseload tonight. So this is the cell tower located at 12016 Stark Avenue. If, if the public is here for this cell tower, this would be the opportunity, when it's opened up for public comment, for this specific cell tower. If you're here for the 140th cell tower, then it's the second-to-last case. So we've got the property pulled up on the screen there. It is unplatted. It is zoned agricultural. It is very unique because it is partially in the city limits of Kansas City, partially unincorporated. So this is the city limit right there. This is 120th Street. This is Stark over to the east, and the cell tower location's roughly in this spot. There is currently a single-family home and accessory structures on the property. With it being so close to the city limits of Kansas City, it's in the urban services tier, and it is a PFO farm or peacock farm. So a lot of people will recognize it by, by that because it's very unique as you drive up Stark Avenue. The proposal is for a 155-foot tower. It's 161 feet if you're considering the lightning rod. The applicant indicates that marking or lighting will not be required. However, FAA approval will be required before a building permit is issued for this, and they, in the end, would have the final say on whether marking or lighting would be required. The Land Development Code requires fencing and lock gate, as well as landscaping, and the Land Development Code requires that all cell towers be set back a minimum of 100% of their height. So in this case, 161 feet from all property lines. So in this case, 161 feet from all property lines. That will be checked and verified if this is approved when a building permit is reviewed for this case. As I stated, this case, this property is located in the urban services tier, which tends to be the area around the cities. It is within, obviously, a mile of the city of Kansas City, Missouri. The city did respond to a request for comments that they stated they have no concerns for the location of this tower. And the intent of this tier of the comp plan is to promote urban development compatible with cities. Non-residential uses, which obviously this is a non-residential use, are listed as recreation, limited commercial, and industrial consistent with the long-range growth plan of adjoining cities. Staff feels like it meets that limited commercial aspect with the no opposition from the city of Kansas City, Missouri. Here's the surrounding area. You can see Kansas City in gray. Our property is outlined in the yellow. There still are some larger unincorporated properties, and then there's a mix of subdivisions that are like three- to five-acre lots in that area as well. Conditional use permit have criteria that are different than the rezoning criteria. The Land Development Code lists those criteria. Not going to go through each of them individually, but that section of code says the county commission, and in this case, the Planning and Zoning Commission, need to determine that all of these criteria exist. So it specifically says that these criteria, you need to determine that they exist to approve this. Now, the unique thing about cell towers is, we'll talk about state statutes here in a minute, is the state statutes will conflict with some of these conditional use permit criteria. An instance is the second one talks about the proposed use and its proposed location will not have a substantial adverse impact on the public health, safety, or general welfare, and that will contradict with the state statute that we'll talk about here in a minute. But you are to determine whether this, whether these conditions exist, and then we'll talk about the state statutes here in a minute. This process is kind of the same process with most of our cases. It's published in the Courier Tribune. We sent a total of 24 certified letters for this case. A conditional use permit sign was posted onsite, and this case goes first to the Planning and Zoning Commission, who is an advisory board to the county commission. So no matter what is determined tonight, this case, whether it's approved or denied, would still go to the county commission who has final say. If approved, the resolution is signed by the county commission at that point. So let's talk about the state statutes a little bit. The state statutes were included in the staff report, and I'm summarizing here, and I'm not hitting all of them, but they basically say that the county cannot put a time limit on this conditional use permit. Typically, we would grant a conditional use permit and put a 10-, 15-, 20-year time limit on it where the applicant would have to come back and renew it. Statutes say we can't do that. In addition, it says we can only require a bond if it's been our practice to require a bond on the previous applications. It's not been the county process to require that bond, so we're recommending not requiring that. State statute also says the county cannot evaluate this application based on availability of other potential locations. And they also, state statutes also say that the county cannot reject an application in whole or part based on perceived or alleged environmental effects of radio frequency emissions. So a few of those things contradict with those criteria that you'll see for the conditional use permit. Outside agency approval. Again, we're trying to work with our partners, make sure that we're not approving something that would inhibit any of the outside agencies. We talked about the city of Kansas City. Clay County Public Health, they would approve this when a building permit is issued. There would be no restroom facilities onsite. No water is required to be onsite of the cell tower. And a case review was sent to Smithville Area Fire Protection District with no comments being received. The Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending approval, or Planning and zoning staff is recommending approval with eight conditions. Couple of those conditions, we talked about the FAA approval, fencing, lock gate, landscaping, security signs, the setback requirement. And then we also require that a structural inspection be completed for the tower every two years by a licensed engineer. So that's kind of a brief summary. There is more information, obviously, that was included in the staff report that was posted on the website and presented to the commissioners before the meeting, or sent to the commissioners last week before the meeting. I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have, and the applicant is present as well.
All right, thank you, Kip. Do any of the board members have questions for staff?
Kip, what you're saying is because we've never bonded a project before, ever, we're not allowed to do it?
The way I interpret it is if you don't bond similar cases, then you can't require the bonding for this. And we've, we have required bonds or letter of credit for like infrastructure, for subdivisions, but we haven't, to the best of my knowledge, for cell towers.
It's really addressed in the Senate Bill 650 that was passed by the state of Missouri Senate in August of 2014 that, an item that an authority cannot do or the county cannot do is impose surety requirements, including bonds, escrow, letters of credit, on non. Any of the other board members have questions for staff?
And Chairman, if there aren't questions, I probably have one more thing to add that I didn't...
Sure.
There is a, I know we talked about this last month, but there is a time limit. If the state statute says the county has to act within 120 days of the application, basically.
Do you have a poll of the surrounding?
Yeah, let me go, let me stop this, and I'm going to go to my map, so give me just a second. It'll take a minute to update, and then I'll zoom out. And I also do have a cell tower map that I want to show, that our GIS technician put together of locations of cell towers, or actually, it's just tall structures. So it could be water towers that are located throughout unincorporated Clay County.
What is the facility to the west?
So here's our, let me exit out of this. Here's our subject property. Which property are you?
On the west side, where you've got your pointer on now, what is that?
That's the peacock farm. So those are all the little huts that house the peacocks. I believe they sell and ship and... And the applicant may have more information on that facility.
Well, I'd like to reiterate a few things that Kip touched on is these state statutes, they're going to trump the county's bylaws, and the state statutes read such that the county cannot reject an application because of location. We could request it to be moved, but the applicant does not need to move it. The state does not allow the authority to measure and publish radio frequencies. The 120 days after the date of the application, the, if it's continually perpetually tabled, it will pass automatically in 120 calendar days. The only thing that trumps the state would be the FAA. So, anyway. Do any board members have other questions for staff?
That being said, I think we need to listen to people that are for and against this, and, you know, I mean, let's let this case play out, and, you know, courts. I want to hear everybody, I want to hear what people had to say on this.
We'll let the applicant, if you want to step up to the podium, state your name and address or the applicant's representative.
Evening, my name is Patrick Irwin. My address is 5607 West 130th Street.
Hit the button.
Oh, sorry. Patrick Irwin, 5607 West 130th Street, Overland Park, Kansas. I am the applicant before you here this evening. As staff has indicated, it is a 155-foot monopole with a six-foot lightning rod attached with a total overall height of 161 feet. And let me do tell you, the primary purpose of this structure is to bolster AT&amp;T and FirstNet's network, their system for first responders. It allows police, fire, and paramedics a seamless integrated network. Our application and our engineering drawings that we submitted, they do show that the structure does meet the setbacks prescribed in the code. Furthermore, I also want to tell you that we did begin our search. The first thing we do is we look for existing structures. For one, as a tower owner, we don't want to have competition there, so we evaluate that. We found no structures nearby that were suitable in our search area. And then that led us to the Legs Peefowl Farm. The cages that you see, those are different kinds of exotic commercially sold exotic pheasants and peacocks and peahens. So that brought us to that property. We thought that this would be the absolute least intrusive of our options. I will tell you, we did meet with several other landowners in the area. Several of them were receptive, but we viewed them that they were too close to existing residential properties. We wanted to minimize any kind of an impact. So staff has done a very thorough job of summarizing our application, so I don't want to rehash things that have already been said for you tonight. So I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
What is the distance between that tower and the closest residence?
So the nearest property line is 162 feet, give or take. The nearest residence, I think, is probably another, it's just to the west. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. There's one, there's a cutout in the middle, right there. And I believe that is roughly, I don't know, if I had to guess, 200 feet, something like that.
And I don't know the exact location, but they both measure about 350 from that spot I'm picking.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Where's the nearest?
Sorry, where exactly?
No, 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 you can't, you'll have a chance.
Where's the nearest cell tower in relation to this one?
Well, I don't know. I only reached out in my, I had a half-mile search area, and I know there is not one within a half-mile. I didn't go out driving outside those areas specifically looking for competition.
And this tower is going to meet the needs of the first responders? I mean, does the current cell tower that's around there probably meet those needs now, or do they not?
They do not. They do not.
Okay.
That is why they...
Do you have the data to support that?
We absolutely do.
Okay.
But once again, that data that you're talking about is, we do. But if, I can look into supplying that over to you if you really...
I'd like to see it, actually.
Okay. I mean, we don't, or AT&amp;T doesn't spend a half million dollars to just upset people.
There's, I just want to see the data.
Okay, fair enough.
All right, do any of the other board members have questions for the applicant? All right. We'll, we're going to call for public participation, and we'll let you respond to any public comments. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? Yes, sir, in the gray shirt.
Looks like you left the mic on. Rob Norris, 8721 Northeast 120th Street. We're directly south of the peacock farm. So as of right now, there's road construction on Stark. They have, Kansas City and Clay County have both worked together to say we cannot have any large vehicles on 120th Street at all due to the fact it's too narrow. So now you're talking about, I assume that we're going to have some commercial vehicles coming in. There's also a small, if you zoom in on the map, there's already an AT&amp;T servicing center at the corner, like, of the property. It's, when they park their vehicles out there, it already impedes traffic. And you're talking about on a road that has no painted lines, is not standard depth or standard width, and you're wanting to increase traffic, increase construction. We're also, you're also got an airport to the east, us. You're saying it's how many feet from? Earlier, you said it had to be 161 feet from another structure. There's no access unless you're going to do a new access road? Is that what they're?
The application does have a new access drive to the tower, yes.
Where would that be located?
It's along the west edge of the property extending north.
Extending north?
Correct.
To the north, I don't, I mean, that's just, there's nothing up there as a land. The church is off the side. I don't know where there's an access road up there. That connects to the property...
Chairman, may I?
Yes.
So the applicant is proposing to put a new driveway off 120th Street.
So it's to the south?
No, to the north. 120th to the north to serve the tower.
I understand. I thought we were talking from the property to a service road to...
And the setback, I just want to make sure we're clear on the setback. The setback for the tower is 161 feet from all property lines, not from structures.
Okay.
And what will happen is, if this is approved, they will apply for a building permit through the Planning and Zoning Office, and we will, they will have a, basically, a survey showing the location of the tower with setbacks from the tower to all the property lines. And it's not a, this is, I want to be clear, this is a driveway, not a road. So it's not a new public road being built.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Is there anyone else that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard?
Hi again. Amy Marquez, 8211 Northeast 120th Street.
Yep.
So a few questions. You'd stated earlier that it's 120 days from application that it is considered, and pretty much if 120 days has elapsed, then it is automatically approved. Is that correct?
That's what state statutes read it.
State statute, uh-huh. So when was the application for this?
I think it's dated May 25th.
Okay. Also, you have probably a quarter to a third of the residents on 120th Street that serve fire and police, that have worked very hard to get to this type of residence and still maintain that Kansas City, Missouri address. And when my family worked for years to find land to raise our children outside of the city, but still with my husband as a servant to the city, it was a lot of money and many years went into the effort to get on that street and to not be around cell towers. So I hear all the information regarding EMF exposure, perceived or otherwise, but 26 years in real estate, I promise you, it's a detriment to the real estate around. Buyers specifically, when they are looking at properties, especially in the price range of the homes on the street, will say no. And I can speak for more than half the residents on this street that... And I can speak for more than half the residents on this street that they moved here to have more of a rural experience and home life, not the city urban growth that is being spoken of for the need of the cell tower.
All right, thank you. Yep. Is there anyone else that would like to comment that opposes the application?
My name is Jorge Marquez, I also live at a hundred, or eighty-two eleven, Northeast one hundred and twentieth Street. I work for Kansas City Fire Department as well. Like my wife was saying, about, there's about six of us that live up there. I've, we've had a couple of incidences up there, car wrecks, whatever, just like what my neighbor Rob was saying. It is a narrow street, but we have no problems receiving any transmissions up there. We have no problems receiving any, any calls, or our call volumes all the same. I mean, we don't have any issues at all. The other thing I wanted to bring up is, on one hundred and twelfth and Stark, about a quarter mile east, I believe one of my neighbors said there's a, there's a tower over there, or something to that effect, or?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, well, that's what he was saying. The other thing that, that boggles my mind is, is how can you guys already start this process? How can you already start the process of, of, you know, check? Yeah, it's like, to see if the land is capable of holding a cell tower. I mean, shouldn't we go through this process first? Because it sounds like to me, we're up here just looking stupid, because obviously you guys have already made up your mind. And if we go, when we go to the next meeting, it's already, obviously, it's going to be made up as well, I feel like. I feel like we're kind of just wasting our time here. And just like my wife said, if this cell tower goes up, we're going to be fighting it. We're also probably going to be moving. We don't want the radiation affecting our kids, our family. I mean, I understand you guys don't live by cell towers, right? Any of you guys live by a cell tower? No? Yes, maybe so, no one's not. But we don't want to live by one either. You know, twenty years ago, this would have been fine, because there was nobody up there. But now, twenty years later, you have a hundred and sixty-eight homes in Hampton Meadows, and probably more homes now on one hundred and twentieth Street, because of what I did to that property, and other people have moved in just for that specific reason, just like my wife was saying about being in a rural community. And it is nice to be up there, it's super nice. I love stepping out of my house, walking the west side of the property. But now I'm going to feel like this is going to be a detriment to my health. And I don't like that, and that's why I'm standing here.
Where do you live in respect to the proposed tower site?
I live southwest, I don't know, probably like, what, one house away, probably? I don't know, twenty acres?
I don't know the gentleman's name, so I can't find his-
Jorge Marquez?
And what, what, do we have any, I mean, I know you guys talked about the EPA and radiation and stuff like that. Do we have any studies? Has anybody ever got any tumors, radiation, cancer, from being close to these cell towers? Do we have that information? I'm all about it. I'm, I'm all about putting a cell tower up, but away, away from everybody around us. Why do we want it to be in a community? We do not need it to be in a community. Like I said, I'm all about having to, like I said, I'm not against having a cell tower at all, but just push it further north, away from everybody, so we can live safely. We don't have any data, or do you guys have any data about the radiation, or how does it affect everybody, or tumors and stuff? Obviously, you, you, you may know.
No, I do not know. I'm going by this, all I can do is read the state law.
I get you, I understand.
And that's, that's all I can, our, our hands are tied.
And I know, that's why I was saying-
This is a volunteer job?
Yeah, I know, it sucks, man, I'm yelling somebody who's a volunteer, and I apologize for that.
Well, no, but cases like this are very difficult, believe me.
Yeah, it's very difficult, because like my wife said, we worked eight years for this, eight long years. It sucked. I sacrificed a lot, I sacrificed a lot, a lot of time for my kids, just to be at this point in my life. But then you're going to allow something like this to happen to us?
Marvin's requested the, the supporting documentation from the applicant, and-
Okay, well, you, you have a chance to speak at the podium, so if you, if, you'll have ample opportunity, but I, we're, we're video, we're live streaming this, and we have to take minutes of this. So I would appreciate if everybody, when they want to speak, comes to the podium and not speak from the audience, please.
And I also have another que, can I supply data as far as from our, our Kansas City Fire Department, even the Police Department stating that we don't have any transmission problems up there, because we really? We have a station at, at northeast, or Cookinham Road and four thirty-five. Obviously, for a reason, because that's, that's an area that needs it. So don't you think they may have amplified it, the, the signals, so we can get the coverage throughout the whole city? And the other thing, too, is we're getting new next-tail radios next month. And they're supposed to be better than what we have now, and be able to give us more signal, and we're able to go to underground tunnels and to be able to use those. And we weren't, we weren't able to use it with this, these new technologies, or the new radios that we have. So I'm telling you, we don't have a signal problem. I think it's just, like I said, I'm not against this cell tower, but push it further north away from us, so we can live in peace and health. That's all.
All right, thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to comment that opposes? I think you've already been up, if there's anyone else, we'll, we'll let, we'll give you your turn, sir. Yes, ma'am?
Cynthia Harper, eighty-six oh one, Northeast one hundred and twentieth Street. I think my house is directly south of this tower, is what you're planning. If you could confirm to me, so I can get a visual. You said a hundred and six, a hundred and sixty-one feet from a property line to the tower. So I know of the two neighbors on either side of that property, or where this tower is going to be, and I'm not, I'm hard, it's hard for me to imagine that's a hundred and sixty-one feet from each property line.
Can you blow up your mic?
Yeah, it's just thinking, it's kind of like me, it takes a minute. And just to address that a little bit while it loads, if they submit a site plan where it doesn't meet the hundred and sixty-one feet, they won't get their building permit. So the tower would never go up. But-
Okay, the house, the house-
Can you put your mouse in the northwest corner of the property?
So if I, if I measure from this, and I don't know the exact location, because it's not overlaid, if I measure from here, well, from there to roughly where that property line is, that's two hundred and twenty-seven feet. It's hard to see, but it's, but either way, they have to meet that hundred and sixty-one feet. So we won't approve a building permit if they don't meet that, that setback. So if there's not a location where they can meet that, they won't get their building permit, and they have to submit a, a site plan that's done by a registered professional.
Okay, may I ask another, may I ask pretty much the same question, but just a little bit differently, I guess? The house that was what you were pointing towards, that property line, if you go west, a hundred and sixty-one feet, because, or is it going diagonally? Which way is this tower? North of that house?
It is somewhere in this location.
Okay, from that corner, then you're saying goes up a hundred and sixty-one feet, and it should be okay. And then also should be a hundred and sixty-one feet from the property to directly north of that. And then the property directly to the west of that should be a hundred and sixty-one feet.
It will be required to be a minimum of a hundred and sixty-one feet from all of those property lines.
That is, that is not a very, I'm, my house is right above the A in Kansas City. That is my home, so that my, I'm going to look across to a tower with a road right in front of me. I've been in this house since nineteen seventy-nine, when that was a gravel road, when there was very few properties up there. Seen lots of changes, some of them positive, some of them I don't agree with because of the congestion. And now we're adding a tower to a rural area. So I would just make, I, I would hope that, actually, I'd hope it wouldn't be a hundred and sixty-one feet when it failed. That would be my hope, because I don't want it up there. But I don't have any, anything to cause it to not happen, other than my opinion.
Understand. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to comment that opposes? Yes, sir, come up, please. Name and address.
Uh, Rob again, eighty-seven twenty-one, Northeast one hundred and twentieth Street. Earlier, when they said that they were trying to do minimal impact on residential, could you tell everybody what's going on directly at one hundred and twentieth Street to the east? Who bought that property, and what they're planning on doing with it?
I, I can't, I have no idea.
Okay, Robertson bought that, they have plans of making, putting in four hundred and fifty to five hundred homes. And, but, I mean, you're talking about less than an eighth of a mile from that. And they're telling, you're saying, I'm sorry, AT&amp;T, whoever their representative is, is saying, we're not going to try to put it within a lot of people. I understand that I'm on ten acres, so I'm not a lot of people, but there's five hundred houses going in within a half-mile. I mean, and that there's also been talks of Liberty School District's building in that, on that lot as well. And I mean, I don't know if there's-
I have heard this, well, I-
So I, my, my concern is not only our property, but they're saying that if, if it's truly, you're trying to minimize the amount of people around, with that many people, houses going in so close, I think it's something to at least look into before they're, so, thank you.
And Chairman, I just got a couple of things, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So that's, that's one of the reasons we reach out to the city. So I, we did do that in this case, and they specifically responded that they have no concerns. And just for the record, that is located inside city of Kansas City, so that's not an issue that would go through my department.
And, and I do believe that the area to the, that I'm talking about, to the east of one hundred and twentieth Street is actually Liberty. Not a hundred percent on that, though. Jorge? So, I, I don't, I'm not-
Okay, well, either way, it's not unincorporated, so it wouldn't come through my office.
I understand. But I, but I guess my, my point was, did, did you communicate with Liberty to find out that information, or just Kansas City?
Uh, just Kansas City, because we show that to inside city limits of Kansas City.
Kip, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Does this property with, with the Peacock Farm, is it, does it have a special use permit currently?
No, I believe it's what you, everybody would consider grandfathered in, because it just existed that way for so long.
Would this change anything?
It, not as far as I'm concerned. We haven't had any code violations, any, any issues with this property since I've, I've been, you know, my seven, eight years here. And I'm just trying to zoom out, because I want to see where Liberty starts, just to give the commission an idea. Oh, come on. And so Liberty is over A, A Highway and one hundred and twelfth. So it's, it's quite a little ways.
Cancel, I had another, I had a real quick question, too, or it's more of a statement.
Name and address, please, sir.
Oh, Jorge Marquez, eighty-two eleven, Northeast one hundred and twentieth Street. We also have another hundred and sixty-eight homes. So when I bought my property, it was a hundred and twenty acres. So I bought only forty of it, and then there's eighty behind me. There's twenty behind me, or there's forty, and then there's another forty to the west. Anyways, Robinson bought that as well. They're at Hampton Meadows. So what they're going to do with that subdivision, they're going to move it north. And they're going to, that, we had a big meeting, town hall meeting at Kansas City, they're going to move it, it is what it is now. So they're going to add another hundred and sixty-eight homes to that area as well. To the south, or to the south of me, and to the east. And like he was saying, if we come up with Robinson plans, because I know somebody at Robinson, that we can show that we, that there are going to be, be building homes in that specific area, if we show that, I mean, that's, that's a lot of homes, that's a lot of radiation that we're going to be consuming. Are you guys going to be able to sleep at night, knowing that we're going to be all contaminated, and you guys going to be okay? So.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you. No additional public comment? Would the applicant like to respond to any of the conversation? If you turn the microphone on, state your name and address, please.
Patrick Irwin, five six zero seven, West one hundred and thirtieth Street. So one of the comments was about the traffic off of one hundred and twentieth, or off Stark Avenue. The, we're, once, once the tower's completed, it'll be limited to literally a service vehicle, maybe twice a week. That would be the tops, the amount of traffic that would be coming in and out of there. And the access road is actually going to be, would run straight north on the west side of the pond, along the fence line. And as far as the, the, the health effects, I mean, that's prohibited from, by federal law and state law both. You know, one of the questions that, that I heard was, where's the evident, where's the test of that health effects? There's forty-plus years, and there's not been one case of it ever known. So, I mean, I don't know where I could, what else I can say. Trying to think, uh, yeah, so that's all I have for you guys today, this evening. I do want to, you know what I do, one last thing. We, we, you guys set the rules, we, we follow them. And that's what we did here in this case. We've met all the, the regulations from the county. And we recommend you, we hope you take staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Mr. Graham, would you like to enlighten us?
I mean, I can, I've got a couple of things. My name is Kevin Ray, I'm a county attorney. This body is constrained by state statute. Regardless of what everyone might want to do, the state legislature, legislature of Missouri has made it very clear on how these types of facilities shall be considered by these types of companies. So for example, last comment about environmental health issues on radio sources. The statute is very clear, that's not something that can be considered. The statute makes it very clear that co-location as an option can't be considered, alternate sites can't be considered. Business decisions can't be considered, quality of service can't be considered. When I say can't be considered, I mean, can be considered by this body, or Clay County Commission. That may seem onerous, and probably is, and that is, that's what the legislature and state is very excited to do. And that was done in two thousand and fourteen, and that was the law of the state, and that's what we have to follow. So we've heard some discussion about the, the state statute. And I'll make sure everyone understands how specific this state statute applies to these situations. And really, handcuffs local jurisdictions, counties, cities from being able to address some of the questions that are raised, just to understand that. So several times, questions were brought, or questions were asked, well, how would you like this? That's not a consideration. Their hands are tied to what they can consider. And so I just want to make sure everyone understands, this was done by the state legislature in two thousand and fourteen, and it has been challenged, and it is good law, and that's the way it is, and that's what this bodies has to do.
All right.
Any questions from the commission that would like to have, to discuss about that?
All right, thank you, Kevin. I would, I would have an interest in seeing the, the research documents that you've indicated, Mr. Irwin, that you could produce, that this is the most ideal location for the, for this tower? And are you still willing to produce those?
And, and that it's needed, more than anything. Because I think, if you look up statute, done a little research from last month on this case, I mean, it's basically, it's whether or not this actual cell tower is needed in this area. And if they've spent a half-million dollars, if they're going to spend a half-million dollars building this damn tower, they probably spent ten times that on the study that says it's needed. I'd like to see it.
Mr. Irwin, would you, would you want to respond to that, please?
So that would be a business decision, I mean, would we not agree?
Right.
That's number one of the prohibited acts of-
And I get your role in this whole thing, I get it, I understand it.
And there is, you know, privacy rules regarding it, and that's the number- And there is, you know, privacy rules regarding it, and that's the number one point of the statute that he referred to, is a jurisdiction cannot take into account the business decisions. I can request it, and they may very well give you what their engineers have shown, showing how there's red areas where first net does not work in this area. I can request it, I can't guarantee it. I mean, I, I would, but I would, yeah, I mean, that'd be in violation of the statute, but I'm willing to work with you, is all I'm telling you.
Yeah, I get it. And, you know, we're all from this community. I mean, if I lived across the street, I wouldn't want it either. Absolutely not, not there across the street, it's too close. And I, and I get, you know, what we can, what we can do on, you know, up here for, for you, it's basically, you guys come in, you guys know it's gonna be approved, we've got all these studies that say that it's the best place. You know, it's, it's unfortunate that that's the way that this process works, especially on these cell towers, because in my opinion, it doesn't belong there.
And if you clap for him, you gotta clap for me, so no more clapping.
Is there any other discussion the board members have for the applicant or staff? I'll just throw this out, if we wanted to table this application for tonight, to give Mr. Irwin an opportunity to produce the documents that we've requested and researched. We're still within our 120-day timeline, that application's dated May 25th, that's gonna push it through September 25th. Be the first Tuesday in August.
So, the county commission does meet the last 30 weeks in August.
Right.
Construction is officially getting ready, so the county commission takes us on, first reading on September 7th, and the second reading is September 14th. So, if you were to table my recommendations, that's-
Okay, okay.
I'll make a motion to deny it, then, because then it goes straight to the commission, they can decide. I'll move to deny the approval.
Second. Could we have roll call vote?
So, just to be clear, the motion was to deny, so a yes vote would be in favor of denying it.
Very well.
Marvin Davis?
Yes.
David Rotus?
Yes.
Terry Griffin?
No.
Mike Brinkley?
Yes.
Brad Scarlett?
No.
And Chairman Tom Decker?
No.
So, motion is denied. 3-3. So then, Kevin, I'll ask you, do we go back for another motion?
Uh, for some, you know, something to come out of the approval, denial, or table, that's something that needs to happen.
If we are tied, you're saying we need to vote until we're not tied? Because I don't think that's gonna-
I take it approval, inaction results in the- And really, it means a pattern, I'm sorry, I apologize, it needs to get to county.
That's right. And I'm sorry, you said inaction means what?
That it would be approved, right? It sits here indefinitely, it's-
Yeah, yes, yes.
But even if our recommendation is split, it goes to the county, the county commissioners understand that this board is split, and they have to make the decision, we are not a decision-making body. Our recommendation goes to them as a split decision, we do not have to be-
I have a question, if you've got a split vote here, will you provide our say?
Can we take over, can we recess for five minutes?
Sure.
Let me look at the Bible.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, Terry, go ahead.
If this just lags on for 120 days and is automatically approved, at that point, does the county have any control over where the tower is placed, what kind of landscaping it has, or any, any other details about the tower itself, if it just automatically is approved, since the county did not approve it, per se?
I think the next step is still, the, the actual construction is still, you go to that process.
Okay, they would still have to follow the county regulations for the construction and maintenance of the tower and so forth?
Yes.
But let me ask, since, if it just sits within action, we wouldn't have any conditions, so we couldn't, we couldn't enforce any of the conditions.
So, what you're saying is, in a way, we give up all control, we simply kick the can down to the-
What's that, Brad?
Well-
Let the 120 days expire.
Basically, that's what it sounds like, yeah. We give the, that, unless the county commission approves it, in which case, the county commission would approve it, and, and they would have the control, or they would, they could have, could have proved the conditions-
Well, no, it's, it's, it's two different things, what I'm talking about, is right now, we have a split decision, that I think can be reported to the county commissioners.
As is, as is-
What I was, what you were mentioning, was if we do nothing and push it out past August or September, it's automatically approved, because the state said so, but we lose all control over-
If it's tabled. So, I think it needs to go to the commissioners.
The county commissioners are the only ones that can vote no. All we're doing is giving the recommendation, that I think accurately-
And we've given them a split, so they have to really think about it.
Right.
Did I understand you, Terry, that if we go out to that 120-day drop-dead clause, then the conditions we've got in Exhibit A, those, do those fade off into the sunset, Kip, or are they still part of the county's requirements?
I'm sorry, I was reading through this, what was the question?
If we, if we perpetually table this, and we go into the 120-day drop-dead date-
I think we're past that, though. I think we-
Then, do we, are we losing the, the conditions in Exhibit A? And is the county able to enforce all the 24-month inspections and-
Yeah, I think we would lose control over that, we would only have control of the building permit at that point.
But, but based on our vote just now, it's gonna go to the commission with a 3-3 vote, and then they're gonna decide, correct?
Well, that's, that's, we do want to take a five-minute recess, to make sure that we understand that's the situation.
Well, you might bear with us, we're just trying to do the right thing here, so. Okay, recess is over, so, I think, Mr. Graham, our county councillor, would I like to say something?
Yes, here's what I think, it's a 3-3 vote on the motion, so essentially, it would be a 3-3 on either motion, so approved or denied, so essentially, it fails to pass, and then now is for the county commission, as a 3-3 vote, which it did not pass.
Okay. Well, is that-
And it'll be, it'll go up to the county commission on July 20th, as you might believe, does that sound right?
Yes. So, then that, that case is complete, and we would move on to the next case.
Okay. All right, the next case we'll hear this evening is case number July 22-142 CUP, and could we have a staff's report, please?
Yes, Chairman, we'd like to add, the staff report is part of the official record.
So be it.
So, this is a little bit of a unique case as well, this is a request for a conditional use permit for what the code calls a primary school. In essence, the definition of a primary school is an elementary school. I've got the property pulled up on the screen, it's outlined in yellow, it is Tris Falls Church, it is zoned agricultural, it has two structures, one which is proposed to be used as the, as an elementary school, which is the structure I hear, I believe the other structure here is the church. Unique thing about this property, it received a conditional use permit in 1980 for a temporary mobile home for classrooms, so it has been used as a similar use in the past. I believe this, the building that I pointed out that's gonna be the elementary school has been used as a daycare in the past as well. So, the proposed conditional use permit is for approximately 75 student capacity, it would be preschool through fifth grades. According to the, the business plan submitted by the applicant, they would max out at approximately 82 students and staff in the 2024, 25 school year. The land development code does have some parking requirements, which we consider the existing parking area, which is a paved surface in front of this building, and there are basically 17 spots that are required, they have the square footage to meet those requirements, there would be two ADA accessible spaces required as well. If approved, that would all be part of the building permit review. So, planning and zoning staff and the Carney Fire Marshal walk through the building with the applicant prior to their application submittal, but with any change of use, they have to apply for a building permit, we'll loop back in the Fire Marshal, the Water District, all the outside agencies as part of that review, and make sure that the code meets the, or the, the building meets the fire code and the building code. This is located in the urban services tier, it is a little bit unique, because the rural low-density tier is at the northern boundary of the subject property, it's within a mile of the city of Carney. Non-residential uses include recreation, limited commercial, and industrial, consistent with the city's plans. Generally, there's a couple areas that the county does see commercial development. Now, 99.5% of unincorporated Clay County is residential or ag, but along 92 Highway and 69 Highway are two areas that are specifically pointed out in the comp plan as possible commercial or limited commercial uses, and this property is off of 92 Highway. So, you can see the surrounding area there a little bit, there are large properties still in the area, and then there's a subdivision just kind of to the north and west of the subject parcel. This has the same six conditional use permit criteria that we discussed with the cell tower. This followed that same process, which was publishing it in the Courier Tribune, we sent a total of 37 letters, posted a sign, and it goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission, who makes a recommendation to the county commission. As far as outside agency approvals, Health Department will be included with the building permit review, as will the Water District. MoDOT has stated that the driveway is acceptable, and a permit would be required for any changes, and then we talked about the Carney Fire District. Planning and zoning staff is recommending approval with 11 conditions. Included would be the time length of 15 years for the conditional use permit, the building permit that we discussed, the drive aisles and parking areas must be maintained as dust-free, and then staff is gonna request that you add a condition to require a shared driveway agreement. So, I'm gonna go back to the aerial. So, as we did the research of this property, for whatever reason, there's two small lots just to the west, and this area right here was actually platted in the 1970s, but it does not show up on an internal map, and does not show up on the assessors' map, but we do have a platted subdivision. So, the property outlined in yellow actually consists of two parcels. This small, I think it's roughly a three-acre parcel here, and then the rest that includes the, the proposed school and the church. And our concern is, that we believe this driveway is on both properties, and we want to make sure there's a shared agreement between those two properties, if these properties would ever be split. So, that's why we're requesting that you add that condition. I talked to the applicant about that, they understand it, and I believe they're in agreement with that condition. Staff would be happy to answer any questions you, you have, and the applicant, I believe, is present.
All right, thank you, Kip. Does any of the board members have questions for staff? Would, if the applicant's present, applicant's representative, step up to the podium, please?
My name is Kent Hill, representing First Baptist Church in Carney, Missouri.
Can we get the green light on your mic, please, Mr. Hill?
Representing First Baptist Church in Carney, Missouri. Located at 303 South Grove Street. And we've been working with the planning and zoning staff in developing this application on this property out on 92 Highway. As you heard, was originally built in the early 80s as an educational facility, and used as a Christian daycare center for a number of years. We acquired the property in 2016, and now in conjunction with Northland Christian Schools, we would like to use it now for a Christian primary school. We feel this, there's certainly a demand for that school in this area, and it certainly meets both of our missions to further the Christian ministry.
Are either one of the buildings used now on a regular basis? Are either one of the buildings used now on a regular basis?
Not a regular basis. The one that we're talking about today is used mostly just for storage and an occasional event that we have out there for the youth at our church. The other building is used on Sundays by another church just for a meeting place.
Okay, all right. Do any board members have questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, Mr. Hill. Is there anyone in the audience like to comment that supports the application being heard? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard?
Ralph Dale, 22624 State Route Ninety-two. I have more of a concern. I own the pond, sitting right next to the property. And I was in fifth grade. I would have been at that pond. And I do not want to be responsible for anything that might happen to kids on my property. And that's pretty much what I want to, no, I want that on record.
All right, very well.
Thank you.
Good thought. Yes, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to comment that opposes the application?
Hi, Amanda Vestal, 22416 State Route Ninety-two, Carney. I'm the little house to the left of the yellow line. My concern is really what needs to be done to the property in order for it to support that many people as far as septic, electric utilities. Are you putting a lagoon in there to support?
I think, to answer your question, and there's twelve conditions as part of the proposed approval, and a lot of those address the Clay County Health Department as far as the septic is concerned, the approval from the Water District, off-street parking areas. I think a lot of the questions that you have are part of the recommendations from the planning and zoning to the applicant.
Okay. Were those online? Because I didn't find them online.
They should be. Can you help me out here, Kip?
Yes, the staff report is posted on the planning and zoning website, and that'll be towards the end of the staff report. But if you want to reach out to us, we can make sure you get a copy of that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? Mr. Hill, would you like to comment on the conversations we just had about the concerns with the pond and the septic and such?
No, just what you said. First of all, the facility was used as an educational facility for a number of years out there with basically the same age of children, just different classification. And also, as you pointed out, we would have to meet all the conditions of the County Health Department on anything we do, so.
Yeah, okay. All right. Do you have any, oh, yes, sir.
Ralph Dale, 22624 State Route Ninety-two Highway. There's never been that many children at the educational building on that property. There used to be a fence around the property. Tris Falls Baptist Church came to me and asked to remove the fence, which I let them, well, they removed part of the fence. What made it, so my wife could move over to the bean field to make everything look better. They never have taken care of the property next to Beanfield. We have taken care of that for, oh, I'd say since in the nineties. They took the fence down early 2000, I would say.
All right.
But like I said, there's never been that many children
Yep.
as an actual educational building. They have Sunday school, they've had Bible school, but not an actual educational building there.
Yep, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to comment on, that opposes the case being heard? With no other discussion from the board members, I would call for a motion to approve the conditional use permit for the primary school for First Baptist Church of Carney.
I do have a comment before anybody makes a motion, though, because I think it is a valid concern with having quite a few students up here and having a pond so close, you know. Is there anything that we could require? Could we have them put a fence around this pond? I mean, I think if I own the pond next door and some kid were to jump in it and something were to happen, God forbid, you know, it's pretty close. Could we add it as a condition that they would have to build a fence around this pond? Or at least, I mean, is there any kind of discussion that we want to have with regard to that? Probably not, but just because it's on another piece of property, but.
Kip, could you shed a light?
Yeah, I would love to. So you could add a condition. I would just request if you go that route, specify exactly where that fence needs to be and how it should be constructed. The closest case would be, if you remember, the conditional use permit for the St. Mary's Home for the Mothers. We added a condition, I can't remember if it was this body or the county commission, added a fencing requirement around their west property line to separate the home from a neighbor's pond. So it has been done in the past. But we required on that one that it had to be constructed. We have fencing requirements that is considered a pool barrier. So like if somebody puts up a pool in their backyard, it has to meet specific requirements. And I would recommend you do the same if you go that route with this one, because it just makes it more difficult for a child to crawl through that fence.
I don't know if we need to get that far, but I would say that, you know, as a, you guys could be neighbors and try to figure that out, because if we were to go that route, then I'm not sure how this would end up.
Yeah, I think we've already closed the, we've closed public participation, sir. I'm sorry.
I put up a fence already down the main us on the west side of the pond there.
I would think it'd be Mr. Hill's best interest to
Yeah.
look into a fence and for the protection of your students.
They don't take care of the fence.
Okay, we've closed it for public comments.
Do you want to add a condition?
And just while you think about that, there's roughly, if you go from Ninety-two, if I go from Ninety-two up this property line to this corner, that's about nine hundred feet. And then from there to there is about four hundred feet, just as a reference.
Did you make this condition? I'll move to included as a condition that a fence has to be around the perimeter of the pond.
Very well, they have roll call vote.
This is just to add a condition requiring a fence around the pond, but how do you do that without the proper, with this? We don't, the applicant doesn't control around the pond.
Right, I get it.
I don't think that's what Marvin was saying. Marvin was saying, well, the property lines surrounding the pond that belongs to the applicant.
Correct.
Oh, and that's, yeah, that's a tough thing.
Yeah, and I just want, you could go to this, well.
We did it on the children's home.
Can you bring up the map so we can actually see where you're at there?
Like zoom, are you asking me to zoom out? Oh, I apologize. I don't know why that's not showing. So from there to there, it's about four hundred feet? And then here to there, that takes it? That's about seven hundred total feet if you go from here to that corner?
How would you describe that corner? The top right corner?
This?
Yeah.
The far south, southeast corner?
Are you getting at the southeast corner? Project line?
There's already a fence there. I know I'm not supposed to speak.
Yeah, so it's closed for public comment. I apologize, but it's, we're not taking public comment. So you could go from the south, far southeast corner, four hundred feet, south, an additional three hundred feet of fencing. That's enough for me to get the gist of what we're trying to accomplish, if that's what you're.
So that's about seven hundred foot, beginning at the southeast corner, moving to the west corner, and then proceeding south?
Yes. Yes, that would be sufficient.
So you want a motion to add the fencing as you stated?
Correct, or does that first motion still stand with the additional details? And I'm asking Kevin.
Can I get Mr. Dale back up here, please? I need to ask him at least one more question.
Kevin, that's up to you. I don't, if we've closed it for public comment, can we open it back up?
Yeah, I think reopen for limited purposes. Come on, sir. If you own the pond, come on up.
Is there a fence which would be on the north side of, yeah, describe where the fence is located right now.
Can you put the yellow lines back up there? The fence, wait, there's a fence that is existing across the back. It has been there. It was never taken out.
Okay.
Just the north side of the pond, that fence?
But now, I just, two weeks ago, added a fence down this line right here, just to where it angles back to Ninety-two. There's no fence there, but. Yes, it's just American wire with one strand of barbed wire on top.
It's got barbed wire on top?
One strand, yes. The fence is, I believe it's a thirty-eight inch American wire with about six inches above it with barbed wire.
About three and a half inch of rubber?
Yes, around forty-two inches, yeah, I guess. Yes, that runs this line and this line are fenced, which I did that for a deterrent, and not just for the kids, because it's not just kids. I have adults all the time that I have to go back there and say, this is private property. Do you want me to come hang out on your property? I mean, it's not that I really mind people on there. It's just that I feel that I could be held liable, and not something I want to do is be held liable for an accident happening on my property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we've satisfied the fence requirement. I think we've, Mr. Dale's satisfied the fence requirement or fence discussion if you want to move.
Is there any motion that needs to be withdrawn?
Yeah, I'll withdraw that motion, and then I'll move to approve.
Approve the conditional use permit for the primary school with the twelve conditions attached to Exhibit Eight.
I'll move to approve with conditions.
Very well, do you have a second?
Second.
Yeah, roll call vote?
And just to be clear, for the record, we're not adding the additional condition.
Correct.
But we're not adding the conditional condition that staff requested.
I had, I wrote it down, though, the twelve conditions, because the twelfth one is the added shared driveway.
Yeah, is that good enough for the record? Because we're, he's at there, he. And then we want the shared driveway.
You want the shared driveway, okay. So I would specify with the addition of the additional.
Add the twelve items, including the shared driveway agreement.
Thank you.
As part of the conditions. Should I roll call vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve with conditions.
David Rotos.
Approve with condition.
Terry Griffin.
Approve with conditions.
Mike Brinkley.
Approve with condition.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve with condition.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve with conditions.
Motion carries.
The next case we'll hear this evening is July 22-143RZ/P. And could we have a staff's report, please?
Yes, Chairman, we'd like to add the staff report is part of the official record.
So be it.
So this is the Northbrook Farms proposed subdivision. Got it up on the screen. Currently, it's unplatted. Approximately one hundred and forty-three acres, zoned agricultural. It's outlined in the yellow. The area in blue is floodplain. There is one single-family residence currently that has access off of A Highway. The proposed subdivision is to have a total of five lots. I'll show you this on the aerial after I finish, but a cul-de-sac that exists in the existing subdivision to the south would be extended into Northbrook Farms through right-of-way. And four of the lots would have access off the cul-de-sac. Three of those lots are roughly ten, eleven acres. And then there's a large one hundred and two-acre lot, which is kind of the east side of that property. The existing house would be on a ten-acre lot and still have access off of A Highway. So we're talking about four additional driveways coming off the cul-de-sac that would be the developer's responsibility of putting in. They would also be responsible for removing a temporary cul-de-sac and extending that street. This is located in the urban services tier, within a mile of the city of Kansas City. City sent an email stating they have no objection to this request, and staff believes this meets the requirement of the ten-plus acres with the agricultural land preservation. The large one hundred and two, I think it is, acre lot would stay zoned agricultural. The other lots would be rezoned to R1, which is our current standard for lots between ten and twenty acres. Here's the surrounding area. You know, kind of a mix of a lot of subdivisions that were kind of done in the seventies, eighties. If you remember, just a few months ago, the property on the other side of A Highway was approved. It was called Eagleview. They were approved for eight lots, five to seven-acre lots for those, which, that's still in the process of going through the process as well. Has the same five rezoning criteria. Staff believes those have been addressed. This one is considered a major subdivision because it has infrastructure. So it's done in two steps. This is the rezoning preliminary plat, which at that point, the county commission decides, does this project make sense for this area of the county? If that is approved, the developer would submit construction plans for the infrastructure improvements, including street, water, stormwater. The county engineer would review those plans. At that point, the developer could submit their final plat. We hold a second set of public meetings for the final plat. At that point, when the final plat is approved, that's when the developer can install the infrastructure. All the outside agencies approve the infrastructure at that point. And then at that point, the developer can record the plat and sell lots. There is a two-year maintenance period for the new infrastructure, which the developer is responsible for maintaining that infrastructure, and a letter of credit is required during that two-year period. At the end of that two-year period, the county can accept that infrastructure into the county system. Planning and zoning staff is recommending approval with fifteen conditions. Couple highlights are a third-party inspector would be on site during the infrastructure installation, and that's paid by the developer. The HOA is responsible for any stormwater infrastructure, and the applicant is going to be responsible for resurfacing Fishing River Road from Woodland north. Fishing River Road, uh, from Woodland, uh, north, uh, as well as the additional infrastructure. And there's a pond that's split between the two lots. Uh, either the lot lines need to move or that pond needs to be demolished. Talking with the applicant, I think they may go the demolition route on the pond. Let me pull this up on the aerial so you get an idea of where we're talking about, and I want to show you that cul-de-sac to the south. So here's the property with the different lots. Lot one is, uh, the one with the house, and here are the new, the three ten-to-eleven acre lots that would come off the cul-de-sac, and the large one hundred and two-acre lot. Uh, I'm going to show you the cul-de-sac to the south. And then we're going to talk about making sure we're not prohibiting development in the future if this ever updates. Um, the unique thing is this, this cul-de-sac on the plat to the south actually shows that the cul-de-sac should have gone to the property line. It does not, but there is right-of-way. If I, ah, if I zoom in here, if this works. You'll see where the cul-de-sack stops short. But there is sixty-foot of right-of-way that runs to the south property line. Hopefully. Okay, here we go. So here's the existing cul-de-sack. There's right-of-way that runs to the north. The developer would be responsible for taking out this temporary cul-de-sack, fixing all this, and extending that road north. And then they would have to resurface Fishing River Road from this intersection north with a three-inch overlay that the highway department would approve. And then one of the items that I struggled with was, you know, this property is very unique. I think the applicant's probably tired of hearing me say that, because it's difficult to deal with. And we're trying to make sure that we're not doing something that's going to inhibit us in the future. So on the plat, you'll see that the, the surveyor put a sixty-foot wide right-of-way that just kind of meanders through the property. Uh, after some discussions mainly with highway department, we've looked at the surrounding properties, and, you know, this is, this is the Oak Brook subdivision to the north, which is fully developed. There's a blue line stream here and here, so we're probably not going to cross that to get to this property, and this has access through this existing cul-de-sack here. And there's probably not enough acreage that we need to run right-of-way to there. So the only property that I can see that if we do this, that we could inhibit development would be this property to the north. So we're proposing to move that sixty-foot wide right-of-way between the lot line between lot four and five. So it runs there, so if a county road would ever need to be put in there, we could. Now, I, I'm open to ideas on this. It's just a very unique property. The one thing I have not mentioned is the applicant did receive a variance request for the length of this cul-de-sack. In the urban services tier, you're only allowed a thousand-foot cul-de-sack. Um, this one is, if I remember right, it's about a hundred and thirty-four feet longer than that. So they did go through the process to get a variance, and that was approved by the Board of Zoning Adjustment. That's a lot of information. Really quick, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
All right, thank you, Kip. Did you say the, the extended length of the cul-de-sack has been approved by the Board of Ver- of variances?
Yes, sir, variance was approved.
All right. And that the sixty-foot wide roadway easement I'm looking at, it's going to parallel or straddle the property line between, uh, lot four and lot five?
Yes, and since this, that is correct, and since this project would go through the process twice, this board would be able to see that easement on the final plat when it comes before you.
Does the staff have any other questions for, I'm sorry, do the board members have any questions for staff? Would the applicant or applicant's representative step up to the podium, please?
Good evening. Steve Warger, sixty-one, twenty-seven Northwest Pine Ridge Circle, Parkville, Missouri. The project engineer, and the owner's here with me also. We're, we'd like to have a little discussion. I know you made a comment, Chairman, and I think Kip was calling it, uh, right-of-way, that it is roadway easement, I believe that we agreed to. Uh, when we had talked, we talked about putting that mostly on the hundred acres, and now we're going to split that property line. We'd like to request, and I didn't catch it before, I would have brought it up with you all, we'd like to request that that just go all on lot five, because that would make it pretty, other than at the cul-de-sack, we could come off between the two of them within that first fifty-foot building line and then take it on up along the, that would be the easterly side of lot four, because that's going to make it tough to sell that future lot four, and that lot four probably wouldn't be subdivided in the future. I think what we're looking for is if the hundred acres sometime in the long term, future-wise, would be developed. The owners do not intend, and have any intention of subdividing this any further at this time. But we understand the county and, uh, staff and highway department had some concern about that, and so we agreed to do that, but we wanted to keep that on lot five if we can do that, or majority of it on lot five.
Yeah, I can see where that would make more sense, and if we're just talking about rezoning and preliminary plat tonight, that can be reflected in the final plat.
Well, if we could just have an understanding, or do something with the condition, however you want to do it, or restate that, or wherever it goes with that. Uh, we will take the pond out, so we won't have that condition, and I think other than that, we're going to agree with everything else within the staff report. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any of the board members have questions for Mr. Warger? All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? Yes, sir?
My name is Kevin Roderick. I live at one-two-three-oh-one Fishing River Lane. Uh, I live at the subdivision, the part of the subdivision that's presently developed, that that road goes through, that they're extending. My concern now is every time I hear something and get a different plat, there's changes. This started out, this property was purchased, there's a road off of A Highway goes to the property. They could have extended that road off of A Highway into the property. They didn't. They decided to go through the subdivision and extend this road. First, it was just a couple of lots. Now it's four lots plus the one that's originally there. Now, I, they're asking, there's a sixty-foot wide road easement in case of further development. This is a subdivision that is now going to have double the traffic with just these four lots on it. And it's, it ended in a cul-de-sack. Now all this traffic's going to come through. We're going to have development. If this expands and they put more lots, there's nothing stopping them from moving to create even more divisions and more property in there. It's all going to go through this one narrow road that runs in front of my house and the other people that live in the subdivision. That's the first problem, is trying to, I don't, I'm not opposed to the development, but I'm opposed to where this is, I see this going at this point in time. Is where does this end? How many houses, I mean, we're going to have traffic double at this point according to the, what's proposed. The next problem that I have is, I've been trying to get the highway department, Clay County Highway Department, to repave this road for three years. It's full of potholes. You gotta drive around through the yards to get to the houses of the people that live on that end, and there's four houses total on that end. Clay County was going to fix them. Now because of the development, they're having, these individuals going to be required to fix it. So nothing is getting done. It gets subdivided. How much longer do I have to wait before they decide to start building and the road starts getting put in? I can't hardly drive now. You gotta drive around potholes so you don't lose your vehicle. So I guess my concern is, again, I, I don't have a, you know, I'm not opposed to development, but I don't see where this is now ending, and that's my concern. How does this get limited that we don't have, instead of four new residences that double the traffic on this narrow asphalt road to where there's fifty houses next time? So that's my concern.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there one else like to comment that opposes the application being heard? Mr. Warger, would you like to, go ahead?
My name is Trent Rains. I live at one-one-six-one-two Woodland. There, I'm right off the entry to A. Uh, I just, not really in opposition, I guess, just a question. How did the decision get made to pave just Fishing River and not out to A? Is there a reason that it decided to stop there? Uh, the road doesn't stop there. The road keeps going down to another cul-de-sack. Um, so really just a question. I don't know if Kip has an answer or what, but that's all.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment that opposes the application?
Marvin, do you want me to answer that?
Please.
Chairman, is it okay?
Sure.
I think Marvin was wanting an answer. So a couple of things with that is, and Terry may want to chime in as well, but that, that requirement came from the Clay County Highway Department. I didn't want to speak for them, but my guess is that they, the new houses would use just that cul-de-sack, because they're going to go from the new cul-de-sack and then exit out onto A Highway. Um, but Terry, if you want to, um, talk about that a little bit, and I, I do want to address the previous gentleman a little bit. So if, if this preliminary plat is approved the way it is now, the final plat has to be in compliance with the preliminary plat. So they cannot bring a final plat that has additional lots, or it, or staff would recommend denial at that point. Um, so any extra subdivision of land would have to go through a new case, basically, and sorry, Terry.
No, that's okay. Uh, basically, what you said is correct, Kip. Highway Department looked at that, and I realized that there will be extra traffic on Woodland Lane between A and Fishing River. Uh, but we made the decision to have the, uh, developer put asphalt on the, uh, area north of, uh, Woodland Lane because of the limited amount of traffic that's going to be to the south. And depending on how our budget is for the next year or two, hopefully, we'll be able to get asphalt on the rest of the subdivision before too long. But that will be a budgetary consideration later.
Okay. All right. Would the applicant like to respond to?
Just, just one thing, and it was the discussion of taking the road off A Highway. Uh, the site distance and the amount of work that would have to be done on A Highway. The state wouldn't even let us do a shared access at that point because of the condition, site distance-wise and everything else. So that was why that wasn't chosen, basically, because we wouldn't be able to stay in that location. There would have to be a lot of work done on that roadway or on the highway to get that done.
All right. All right. Does the, any board members have any other questions for staff or applicant? And I would call for a motion to approve the rezoning of, uh, Northbrook Farms.
I'll move to approve.
Very well, do you have a second?
Second.
Yeah, roll call vote?
Approve.
David Rotos.
Approve.
Terry Griffin.
Approve.
Mike Brinkley.
Approve.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve.
Motion carries.
I think we can roll into the preliminary plat, and, uh, I would call for a motion to approve the preliminary plat of Northbrook Farms with the conditions attached as they're set out in Exhibit A.
I'll move to approve with conditions.
Very well, do you have a second?
Second.
Yeah, roll call vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve with conditions.
David Rotos.
Approve with conditions.
Terry Griffin.
Approve with conditions.
Mike Brinkley.
Approve with condition.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve with condition.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve with conditions.
Motion carries.
Are you doing this one? All right. Okay, the next case we'll hear is case number July two-two dash one-four-four CUP. And could we have a staff's report, please?
Chairman, I would like to add the staff report to the official record.
So be it.
So this application, this is a, um, a, asking for a conditional use permit and what we classify as a group daycare based on our, um, land development code and our use table. Um, the property currently sets, it's, uh, it's unplanted, nearly six acres, um, zone agricultural. Uh, there's currently an existing, um, existing house and accessory structure on the property. Uh, this property falls under the urban services tier and highway corridor overlay district. The city limits of Carney and Mosby are all within a mile of the property, and also shares an access, as you can see right here with this, uh, property. The, the conditional use permit itself, based on what the applicant provided in terms of a business plan, um, and site plan, but the group daycare, uh, would be for anywhere between eleven and twenty-one children, between the ages of two and six. The hours of operation would be seven-thirty AM to five PM. Uh, there would be a total of three staff members, uh, two of which live on the subject property. Uh, the LDC requires a dust-free drive, dust-free drive aisle and parking areas. As it sets now, the, uh, driveway is gravel. So again, the, the property is within the urban services tier and highway corridor overlay district and within the mile of the Carney and Mosby. The intent is to promote urban development compatible with cities. The non-residential uses within this tier contain, uh, recreation, limited commercial, and then, and limited industrial consistent with long-range road plans of adjoining cities. As you can see here, uh, again, this is off of, uh, Sixty-Nine Highway. We have industrial zoning. This is the city limits of Mosby. I believe this up here is the city limits of Carney. So we believe that our staff believes, uh, that this meets or aligns with the conditional use permit criteria. This, the process of this, looks like we published this in the Courier Tribune. Property owners within a thousand feet are sent certified letters. Uh, we had a conditional use permit sign posted on the site. Um, we also have a letter of support received from adjacent property owner. Uh, so with the outside agency, uh, MoDOT does not, this is, uh, what they indicated at least, does not foresee issues with the increased traffic, although they suggested that the applicant obtains a support letter from the neighbor that shares the driveway with them. Uh, the staff has received that letter, and that's what I was referring to in terms of the letter of support. The approval from the health department will be part of the building process along, uh, Carney Fire has conducted an inspection on May eighteenth, and will be included in the building, uh, building permit process as well. Staff is recommending approval with thirteen conditions. Um, it'll be a fifteen-year conditional use permit. Uh, the parking and drive aisle shall meet the code, which refers back to, it needs to be dust-free. Um, hours are not to exceed seven-thirty AM to five PM, Monday through Friday. Recording a shared access agreement, uh, and, uh, meeting the Clay County Public Health Center requirements. Uh, those are some of the conditions. Uh, staff would be happy to answer any questions. Staff would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners might have, and the applicants are also present.
All right, thank you, Shane. Do the, any board members have questions for staff regarding the application being heard?
Shane, how many students was it max?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
What was the max occupancy on the students, I guess?
It would be 21 children.
21?
Mm-hmm.
And I might add that according to the applicant, their kind of sweet spot is somewhere in the 15 range, but the code would allow up to 21.
If there's no other questions from the board, would the applicant step up to the podium, please?
Hi, good evening. My name is John Kilpatrick. This is my wife Carol Kilpatrick, and we live at 19414 Northeast US Highway 69, Liberty, Missouri.
We have a long history of working in the childcare industry, both of us do. We, 29 years ago, I was working in a daycare classroom alongside my six-month-old son. It was understaffed, unsafe, and unacceptable, and it was then that I decided to be part of the solution. I took over the operation of that school, as well as four others, over the years that were also struggling. In addition, I was approached to start two additional preschools from the ground up. We tell you that so that you understand we actually have a long history and understand what we're doing and what we're getting into. Two and a half years ago, it was because of that same son that we became grandparents for the first time and moved from Florida to care for our granddaughter, and over time decided to launch another school. We spent a year planning, developing, and purchasing, and the next six months executing the start of Lyons Heart Preschool. We chose to, we choose to offer more than half of our home to provide safety, protection, exceptional education, and ample space for the children in this community. There are currently 17,068 children under six years old with working parents in Liberty. Liberty only has a licensed capacity for 5,342 of those children. That is an 11,726 child shortfall, which is huge. In viewing the Liberty Facebook page just today, there were a number of posts with offers to watch my children, watch children in my home. When I scanned the pictures on the posts, I saw trampolines, which are illegal, play structures with no cushioning for a fall zone, decking in full sun with no shade, play spaces set up in basements with poor lighting, little visible, childproofing, tall shelving that poses climbing and falling hazards, not to mention the absence of screening for criminal background checks for anyone in the home. Equally, on the same Facebook page, there were desperate parents asking for others to help them find care for their children. Working families are on multiple wait lists that can extend beyond a year and are forced to accept whatever care is available by whoever offers it. Unlicensed childcare is like putting children in a pool with no lifeguard. As a community, we have to do better, and we're here to tell you that Lyons Heart Preschool has an experienced team with a solid track record, is presenting a responsible, well-developed solution to increase childcare opportunities in Liberty. For the past six months, we have provided a full-time educational program, taking the well-being of every child seriously. We are career professionals with an exemplary record and consider it a privilege and an honor to be a child's second home. We strive to go beyond in our programming and vow to be an industry leader in the Liberty community.
Okay, do you understand the staff's report and their requests?
We do, yes.
Is there any, when you reach a certain number of, of a group daycare, so to speak, is there a state oversight that, the state of Missouri comes in and?
We are currently in the licensing process for that state oversight right now, and until we get the approval from the county commissioners, we are not allowed to be licensed, which means we are held, according to the county, under, that under that six children capacity. Normal licensing would bring us to 10, but since the size of the home and we're able to provide a big playground and a walkout level, fire escapes, we've done everything.
So, there's?
We could go up to 20. We won't reach, we can't reach that 21 because state licensing will bring us to, up to 20.
So, state oversight starts at over six?
Yes.
Children, yeah.
Yes.
Do, do any of the board members have questions for the applicants? Sounds like there's 5,000 openings, and you just are extending 15 or 20, huh? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? Yes, sir.
My name is Andrew Powell. I live at 702 Lucille Street, Liberty, Missouri. I am the son of Carol Kilpatrick and a boy. I gave her a really cute granddaughter. I think there are multiple reasons that you ought to consider approving this. One being she only has all-boy classmates, and she's really cute, so we need to get her away from the guys. But I do believe that the education that is provided there is excellent. I do believe there's a pretty high shortfall right now for unlicensed care. In my mind, unlicensed care would be similar to allowing pools to operate without lifeguards, and I think that state oversight's a great thing, particularly for people who are willing to play by the rules and pursue licensure. Additionally, I think the only concern that I would have had about the property would have been the turnoff off of the highway. Sat down with these two and voiced the concern. They were able to provide a map for me of a more suitable route, also with understanding that, you know, clientele would come from Excelsor, Carney, and Liberty, not just from Liberty, like I am. And then, in driving my daughter to this daycare, recognized that there is also a school bus stop along the same highway, so I imagine that if it's deemed safe for that, it would be deemed safe for this as well. Those are all the comments I have.
Right, very well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Liz Eichenberger, 16814 Northeast 126th Street, Carney, Missouri. I, both my boys go there. I've been on 14 waiting lists since November, and I've spent over $2,500 a month trying to find daycare up until we were able to go there. So, it's definitely a need. It's very safe. That's one of the biggest things for our children's now is today's world, sending your kids to school is pretty scary, so having parents who live there, grandparents who are there, providing home-cooked meals, the education, it's really given us kind of a peace of mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment that supports the application? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? With no further discussion, I would call for a motion to approve the conditional use permit for the group daycare for the Lyons Heart Preschool, with the conditions set out in Exhibit A as attached.
I'll move to approve with conditions.
Very well, do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve with conditions.
David Rotis.
Approve with conditions.
Terry Griffin.
Approve with conditions.
Mike Brinkley.
Approve with conditions.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve with conditions.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve with conditions.
Motion carries.
The next case we'll hear this evening is case number June 22-134CUP. And could we add the staff's report, please?
Yes, Chairman. We'd like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
So, this is the continued case from last month. So, we discussed this last month with Planning and Zoning Commission. It is the request for a conditional use permit for the Carney East Cell Tower. Currently, it's unplatted, 10 and a half acres, zone ag. There's a house and an accessory structure. It's located within the Urban Services Tier and within a mile of the city of Carney. Here's the site plan. The request is for 155-foot tower. Applicant, again, indicates no marking or lighting will be required, but again, will require, if this is approved, will require FAA approval before the issuance of the building permit, along with the previous case, fencing and lock gate, landscaping is required, and then the setback is the height of the tower. Comp plan indicates this is in the Urban Services Tier. The city of Carney has not responded with any comments. The intent is to promote the urban development compatible with cities, and again, in the Urban Services Tier, recreation, limited commercial, and industrial are allowed if consistent with the long-range growth plans of adjoining cities. So, here's a little bit of the surrounding area. See the property outlined in yellow. There's a flood plain to the east. City of Carney is, basically, almost surrounds the whole property. This is city of Carney here to the south, to the southwest, and to the northwest. There's large acreage, there's smaller lots. It's kind of a mix in that area. We talked about the conditional use permit criteria, where the Land Development Code states that the county commission, in this case, the Planning and Zoning Commission, shall see that these conditions exist. Again, we're going to talk about the state statutes and how they conflict with the conditional use permit criteria. This follows the same process, sent 24 letters, posted a sign. Now, we did receive additional information between last meeting and this meeting. So, some of it was included in your staff report, some of it was received afterwards and was not included in your staff report, and I'll kind of go over that at the end. Same process is this, this board makes a recommendation to the county commission, and the county commission votes to approve or deny. Quickly, I'll hit on the state statutes. We talked about not allowing a time limit on the conditional use permit, no bonding requirement, cannot evaluate based on availability of other potential locations, and cannot reject an application in whole or part based on perceived or alleged environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, and then has that 120-day limit that we talked about with the previous case. Now, this case was submitted before the previous one, so we can discuss that if you wish. Outside agency approval, Highway Department has stated that driveway permit is required. Location is acceptable, no restrooms, again, for this tower, and no water for this tower. City of Carney did not respond, either from the Fire District or the city itself. And then, staff reached out before both meetings to Midwest National Air Center. This property is located in the Airport Overlay District. The airport manager indicated to us that they would rely on the FAA approval. If it's approved by FAA, it's good with Midwest National Air Center. Planning and zoning staff is recommending approval with the eight conditions. You'll see most of these conditions match the previous cell tower application as well, which includes the structural inspection, FAA approval, fencing and lock gate, landscaping, security signs, and that minimum setback. And I do want to talk about the additional information. So, in your staff report, there was a letter from a tenant at Midwest National Air Center that was included. Let me grab. There was, with the previous, before the last case, there was a study provided by the applicant about property values, so that was included in this report as well. There, there was a letter submitted by the applicant from their attorney that was submitted in the staff report, and then we received a couple of large items after the staff report was complete. There is, well, actually, with the previous case, Mr. Ross spoke at the last meeting and submitted a packet, so you would have got that with the first staff report and the second staff report, and then two additional large items. There is a submittal by the opposition that included a memorandum in opposition, and it also included letters from adjacent property owners and a couple letters from real estate brokers addressing the decreasing of property values around cell towers. So, that was in a large document that should have been included in the staff report. And then, on Friday, and Angie's going to hand it out now, we received additional information from the opposition, and it's titled United States Court of Appeals. That was the last submittal that we received. Now, a lot of moving parts, a lot of information, but I think that's the update from the previous staff report. And I would be happy to answer any questions commissioners may have. The applicant is present, and I know there's several members of the public that want to speak as well.
Well, this is quite a bit for me to digest.
I learned way more about cell towers than I ever wanted to know.
Nothing's changed from last month, though, basically, right? I mean, there's no change where this tower's being built. I mean, it's in the exact same spot as, okay.
Same spot, conditions are the same, no additional height, no location change, nothing like that, no.
Is there any way that we can get a quick summary of what this court case says? I mean, obviously, we're not going to be able to read 30 pages or however long it is tonight.
Yeah, if you have an opportunity to review this, Kip?
You can take some time to review that if you wish. I don't know that I'm qualified to summarize the court case.
Okay, thank you.
Is this the Teller or Keller Craig &amp; Associates? Kind of a, is that something that the applicant had also turned?
That was provided by the applicant with the previous meeting. That was basically a study on another, on tower sites in the Kansas City area. The opposition has, as part of their packet, which I guess I can show you what that looks like, so there's no confusion. It's this one. There's some additional information from letters from property owners?
Yeah.
And some real estate information in this one.
Yeah. Attachment A, yeah.
But under state law, we're not allowed to discuss health considerations about RF radiation, correct?
Yes, sir, it is, and not under a case. It's not discussing those very well.
Right. So, this really has no bearing on what decision we make because we can't consider RF radiation concerns in our, in our consideration today.
It's reasonable that your operating member would restrict you, constrain you from considering that at RF.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any of the board members have additional questions for staff? If the applicant or applicant's representative will step up to the podium, please.
Good evening. Glenn Clarki with Network Real Estate, St. Charles, Missouri. Our address is 5055 Highway and St. Charles, Missouri. We represent AT&amp;T for this particular site. And we're looking, again, we're looking to install a new communication tower. This tower, this particular tower, will be, the tower itself is 150-foot tall. It will be a monopole with a five-foot lightning rod attached to the top, so it makes the height of the tower 150 feet. We are complying with the city setback requirements on this property. The tower itself, the setback to the west is 155 feet, to the north, it's 155 feet. To the east, it is 281 feet, and to the south, it's about 600 feet. So, we are complying with the regulations that the city has proposed. We will be accessing the site off of Northeast 140th Street with a 12-foot access road that's going to run along the property line to the west. It will be a 12-foot gravel road. There will be a gate at Northeast 140th Street, so that the access road cannot be accessed easily. They'll have a lock on it, it'll be a gate that closes and locks. The site itself will be 100-foot by 100-foot. Chain link fence is six-foot tall. They'll fence in 90 feet by 90 feet of that, that also will be locked. Everything that is associated with this tower will be inside that lease area. There's no guy wires, everything, the electronic equipment, the tower, everything is going to be inside that. And as stated before, the tower, once the tower is constructed, which will take about six weeks, depending on weather, sometimes six to eight weeks if we get a lot of rain. What comes out there after that is probably, once a month, you'll see a service vehicle, which is a SUV or something like that. These towers make no noise. This tower will not be lit. We will provide an FAA approval showing that. We do have, we do run a preliminary kind of an FAA, so we know what we're dealing with, so we know that we can actually put the tower there. So, we will provide the FAA final approval if we get to that point with the city. So, this location was picked, like I stated before. We get a search ring. This particular search ring is a quarter-mile round. We go to the area, we look at different locations. We provide locations that landlords are interested in doing a lease with us, and the engineering department, it's their call. We just say, "This is what we have for you. You know, which one do you, which one do you prefer?" They tell us which property that they want to go after. So, it's their network. You know, we're just kind of saying, "Here's what we have," and they determine the location.
I've got a question for you, Mr. Clark. Your predecessor tonight, Mr. Irwin, said that they basically went in a half-mile circumference.
Right.
Pretty familiar with their area. Are you sure within a half-mile could have found, it looks to me like 1,000 feet is kind of the line that really doesn't affect, you know, from a residence. It seems that that's about the distance, you know, if you start getting close to that, it doesn't affect values, health, and things like that. And sure, within a half-mile, you could have found that.
We, this particular search ring, what they gave us here was a quarter-mile. That's what they gave us. I don't know what they gave that particular company. I didn't even know that AT&amp;T had another site going.
Were you the one sent the letters out? I do realize you sent the other, own landowners around the area to see if they were interested.
Yes, yes. So, we look, yeah, I mean, part of what we do is we look for, we have to have, obviously, a willing property owner. I mean, you know, without that, you know, we can't twist somebody's arm and say, "We're going to put a tower on the property." We have to have a willing landowner. We have to work with them, we have to work with the engineers of who we're dealing with. It's a process. This particular site, I've been working on for probably two years, maybe a little longer. And, you know, that's, we have to, we always keep into consideration the county's codes. If we can comply, there's some property owners that will say, "Yeah, I'm interested," but I'll look at the property, and like, "I can't, it's not big enough," you know, with the setback requirements. But we try to eliminate them upfront. So, I mean, it's basically, you know, we're, we have to find a property owner that says, "Yeah, you know, I want to do a lease on my property." So, that's part of what dictates where we go in that area.
Mr. Clark, was this report from Keller Craig &amp; Associates, this is something that you had submitted to the county with your application back in April, is that correct?
The real estate report?
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes. It was one that was done in Kansas City on a different location in 2021.
Yeah. Based off Kansas City north, North Liberty area.
Yeah.
Well, I think last month, we talked a little bit that there's a substation about 700 feet nor, or four, 700 feet east of Mr. Kavanaugh's house.
Correct.
But you thought that the substations, the, would have electrical interference with the cell towers, is that?
No. What, here's what happens with substations. We looked at that property, we did look at that property, and, you know, I turn them into the engineers, they, you know, they look at the locations, they chose the property. The substation was brought up, like, we're close, you know, it's something that, getting that close to a substation, it's not interference, it's just being that close to a substation that they don't want to, you know. Sometimes the electrical companies get, get, you know.
But you also had a quarter-mile radius to work with, so this is, you know, less than 1,000 feet, or, you know, 75, 80% of a quarter-mile adjacent to a substation, but instead, we're going to build a 155-foot monopole 297 feet from a gentleman's back door.
I agree with you. That's, I mean, that's, again, we look for properties that we can comply with the setback requirements. This one did, you know, as the other one right next to it did, it would still be close to that residence' back door. I mean, it would be, you know, if that was the property that they selected, you know, we'd, it would be probably in the same percentage, you know, they moved over.
I'm sorry, could you?
So, your question is, the tower is close to the property owners?
It's 155 feet from the, from the western property line.
Correct.
And then, that gentleman's house is about 140 feet west of that, of the common property line that we're talking about.
The property that we're on, that house?
Yeah.
Correct.
So, we're talking about building a 155-foot monopole, monotower, less than 300 feet from a gentleman's house, and you're telling us that you have a quarter-mile radius to work with, and there's a substation less than 1,000 feet away, but the substation's not a suitable location?
Their, their choice was that location. I mean, it's just what we give them, would it come back?
Is it based on lease rate?
Is it based on lease rate?
Yeah.
Absolutely not. It is not.
Okay. So, you're 600 feet from the homeowner's site, I mean, it's, I mean, why didn't you put it 155 feet from the back door of the homeowner?
Because we have to, your ordinance, it has to be setback from the property line. That's what we, that's what we start.
But you're only 155 feet back from the north property line and the west property line. You'd put it right smack dab in the middle of the property, you'd be closer to the homeowner's house, but I'm sure he doesn't want that, of course, because no one does.
That was, that's where he wanted it. We wouldn't put it somewhere that he didn't want it. That's pretty much where he wanted it. You can ask him.
Well, everyone, you'll have your chance, please, be patient. We're having as much fun as you are, so.
Me too, but that's where he wanted it. It's not, that was his choice. We sit with them, we walk the site, we, you know.
I've worked heavy highway, civil site construction, and I just can't fathom that you've got a quarter-mile radius, here's a substation 1,000 feet away, but that substation doesn't qualify and fall within that quarter-mile radius. And instead, we're going to build a 155-foot monopole less than 300 feet from a man's back, back door. This is insane.
Exactly.
And I know, you have a job to do, you're just doing your job.
Exactly.
And it's strictly business, and I respect what you're doing.
I'm not, you know, that's why we're here. That's why we have these hearings, that's why.
In an area where there is open ground within, so, that wouldn't affect as many people and wouldn't affect them as directly.
I understand that, yeah.
Actually, you have more open ground to deal with than the first case, actually.
Right, and I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that, I'm just telling you, there's times that I look at things from what we get handed, and I say, "Why not?" And there, it's their design, at the end of the day, it's their network. They're probably trying to reach that tower, the gentleman wants to put up. I guarantee you, that's going to be a tower they're trying to connect to when they're built, if they're built.
This is kind of a mute point, but the drawings submitted are stamped by a Kansas engineer, so that's not a big deal, but.
It was stamped by a Kansas City engineer?
Kansas, Kansas PE.
Okay, well, that.
That's a simple oversight. Go to vote.
If we can, or we can ask, I'll make a motion right now.
No. I think we got an agenda that we need to parallel. Mr. Clark will have some public participation, and we'll invite you back up to the podium.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. So, we'd like to remind everyone that the topic of discussion needs to remain pertinent to the case being heard, and we know how everybody feels about "Not in My Backyard," and if someone just got done saying what you have to say, then we only need to hear it once, so. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? Yes, sir, blue shirt?
Good evening. Carl Chesser, 14217, Jesse James Farm Road. I'm here tonight with my wife, Courtney. We worked with the community to submit the memo that you have tonight. This collective memo is an opposition forum that we have, which includes many of the people that are listed here who are here tonight. I'd like to use tonight to go ahead and do a summary to cover this information, because there's quite a bit of content in here, and we'd like to go ahead and cover what we feel is extremely important to share, as well as.
Are you talking about the Court of Appeals that was just handed out?
This first, the memorandum of opposition, yes.
Okay. Okay, we might be timely, because we've got a lot of people here.
I understand, yes. So, I'll try to go through this, we won't go in reading each page of this, but if you open up the first page of contents, there's several points. The first one that we're going to try to focus on is point one, and this is an important point that we want to first cover. This goes over just highlighting both what is in the comprehensive plan that you mentioned is used as a basis of decision for zoning, as well as the LDC they have listed here that you shared with us of what we have to follow and highlight, what may be not following that code in this case. So, we want to go ahead and make sure we can cover that, as well as in accordance with the Telecommunications Act of 1996, which is part of the Missouri statute. So, the first part, we want to hit on this, was highlighting the very importance around the comp plan that focuses on the broad ability of local government to mitigate public impact of private development and promote the public welfare. And also, this focuses on the plan that's concerning the needs of the individual property owners while promoting the good of the community at large. So, while you're very familiar with the comp plan and the LDC, I want to make sure we could get down to focus on the few points that we know that we can discuss and are fully empowered on this decision, which goes down to, in the LDC, subpoint C, which is "The proposed use will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the vicinity." This is something we want to make sure to cover, because we believe this has a strong case of why this would drastically and have an adverse impact to the property value. The other one we want to make sure is covered is on point F, which is "The proposed use is compatible with adjacent use in terms of scale, site, and design." As you have already highlighted, this is a 155-foot monopole that's 15 stories, where nothing in this area goes beyond two stories of any man-made structure. So, we want to go ahead and make sure we focus on those points, and we also want to highlight that the applicant did not indicate at all this is due, actually fill a significant gap in coverage, but rather to fill, to go ahead and expand coverage, which is a very important detail, and even what Mr. Davis brought up earlier of requiring actually hard data to ask to make sure your smart planning decisions are made, meaning you're actually introducing the optimal set of cell towers in our county to cover without having extra or excessive amount of towers getting applied over time. So, I would like to go ahead and cover, before we get into this, there is another point that needs to be brought up. In the first part, we have two sections. One of the sections has exhibits in it, this is the kind of included content, it's what Mr. Jones brought up earlier about a tenant at Midwest National Air Center. So, when we were first looking at this, being residents just north of this, we noticed, you know, there's a lot of aircraft that come in and use the airport, both recreational flying and commercial. So, we wanted to make sure there's a good understanding that we knew that the FAA had approved this. However, we saw there was a lacking business impact about what would happen if this were to be introduced. So, when we went to investigate what were, what businesses heavily use the airport, we found that there is a very important tenant there currently, which is Central Air Southwest. They're a cargo air, cargo airline that's in the area. They heavily use the airport, and so we want to make sure this was highlighted, because in a MoDOT study in 2012, there's a large economic impact within the airport, so for the area, it produces $4.4 million of output, and that was in 2012, knowing there's been a positive growth rate in that area, so you can assume that's a very conservative number. The point here that we want to make sure that we kind of highlight about this business impact is that agnostic of what the FAA approves was physically possible to put in the air, there's still a business impact to someone who uses this airport all the time. So, in this response, this in exhibit A, it highlights that this is a kind of a very great concern, so the statement is from the Assistant Director of Operations, who states that this could seriously affect instrument approach minimums that would result in more diversions and thus greater cost to us. So, if you're familiar with air flight at all, diversions are a massive cost, especially in the Midwest, where you can have variable weather, meaning if an aircraft comes in, they cannot get down to a lower altitude, hence they have to stay at a higher area. That results in either staying in the flight longer or getting diverted to a different airport to land. That increases cost to a cargo airline, which increases cost to every local business that uses it. That was also highlighted in the MoDOT economic study in 2012 of all the local businesses that also use this airport. So, we want to make sure that was noted, and this is a pretty big business impact, regardless of what the FAA states, because that airline, the Assistant Director of Operations highlights this will increase costs by increasing diversions to the airport. The next thing we want to make sure is covered is highlighting how this impact to the actual property values. So, in that point one, we have several parts that are included. One of the main points that we want to make sure that's highlighted is that this would, of course, adverse impacts upon the aesthetics character of the area. In this memo, we had to consult with several experts to understand what is actually admissible or valuable from other past cases. This found that the, as you can imagine, a 15-story tower would have a pretty large impact, but what would be credible and valuable information to include? In this case, federal courts have upheld that some of the most. In this case, federal courts have upheld that some of the most valuable information about adverse actual aesthetics are the homeowners themselves, and those can be actually introduced as any evidence for your decisions of why this would be impactful. And the important point about this is that they can actually articulate details and specifics of how their property value is diminished, which highlights the point you shared on the LDC, that we have to show this would cause an adverse impact to the actual value of the property owners. This, this is further highlighted, which is in the Exhibit B, so if, in that first section that we highlighted back on Exhibit A with Central Air Southwest for the business impact, this is a larger section where we have every property owner, we have included on here as a letter that's also signed, that annotates the details that are impacted. To help you all, I will just briefly summarize these letters for you, so you can hear those, and then if anyone else wishes to speak, based off what else they shared in those letters. So, each one of these, the first one being Myra Angel, so she's just north of this property. They moved here to enjoy the country through the enjoyment of nature, which has a feeling of serenity and relaxation. She shares how this would destroy that feeling, would have a negative impact on the quality of her life. They are just north of that site, based off that, where the yellow line is on the north side. Charlotte Barr also shares, she's on, on the southwest side of there. She also has a rental property that both my wife and I actually used when we were considering moving up in this area, has a beautiful view to the east, that would literally destroy the front view of what that house actually brings value to many of the people who rent it, because that would be facing where this monopole tower would reside. Gerald and Natalie Benner, they include a statement of how this, they made significant investments in landscaping, planting trees, and the natural surroundings. This tower would literally forever change their tranquil environment that they have. Bob and Carol Cowler, who also are north of there but own the property to the east side of this, highlight how long they've lived in this community, and how Carol also part of her family is part of 180-year family farm, which is also around where that substation is located, highlights how this, introducing this has allowed that substation to grow over time, so any decision we make, you understand there's growth of other complications of what that can do to a community. The other letters from myself and my wife, highlighting how we came up here, we're just north of that property, next to the angels, and we invested a huge amount of our savings first to build our home to move in this area, as well as just to maintain the great aesthetics, and highlighted how our full south view will be blocked by this tower, so what we enjoy from the sky could literally be robbed from us by having this installed. Jared and Donna Jones, they share in their statement, they bought this house to fixer-upper and fell in love with the home and the area. They have deep concerns about the security of that access road being installed here. So, to highlight in this case, which you've all mentioned, is that the location of this is literally in the heart of where all these buildings and homes are at. And so, to actually have access to that, you have to penetrate it with a service road, which then affects more properties all around it. So, it's not on the outskirts, it's literally in the center. And so, this service road would literally cause a lot of impact that they already have, but even annotate how they're AT&amp;T subscribers, who have had no issue for the one and a half years they've lived here. We also have Jennifer and Bob Julian. Jennifer highlights where they're at just south of here, of how much they invested in the 29 years of all their landscaping and beautiful investments they've made in their property, how nothing they can invest can block a 15-story pole that's in, now would be facing on the north side. They lived here for that very peaceful and tranquil environment, and that would rob them of their very investments. And I think what Mr. Decker, that you even highlighted earlier, one of the biggest people that would be affected are the Rosses, which are just west of there. That would be located 297 feet to their back door. And so, as he highlights in here, how this would literally strip them of the one thing that they have of looking out to the east, seeing a sunrise, that sunrise would now be just shadowed on their building with a tower like this. This totally diminishes and removes the value from what they've even had in their property. It's, it's not, doesn't take a lot of explanation to actually, how you could visualize how impactful that would be, but it's literally way too close for any tower to exist. Nathan and Jennifer Tenevah, they also highlighted how much they invested in living in this area, how they've also acquired several animals, they are just west of this location. They have deep concerns of both this service road being installed, based off just the livestock they have introduced, or this service road would be going all along across there. They want to grow this to where they can have community members come and see these animals, they have an actual dream they want to fulfill, this would rob them of the very thing that they had in this property. Austin Thomas also highlights, he's just south of this property, he's a local entrepreneur who's a photographer, who literally has people he takes photos from at his location to actually catch that actual skyline, which would be now fulfilled with a monopole structure that would rob them of the very use of that property. He's made very deep investments of putting a new barn and nice aesthetics. Again, you can't state enough of how much this would actually take away from everyone's investments they've put in their homes so far. And Lacey Weinhold, she also shares how they found their home nine years ago, they are just located south of the, the monopole structure, and with this, it would literally block the very direct view from the front of their home. They fell in love with this home because of the view, and so that, literally the binding decision can be articulated in how they describe their past decisions of moving there, because of not having this in their view, and this would actually be taken away. So, that is a really quick, brief summary of all those letters that were included to articulate the adverse impacts. So, those are clear points you can always share and include as reasoning for your decision that this would absolutely have an adverse impact on their property. The other one too, on here, that we found that AT&amp;T failed to submit sufficient amount of information, was photo simulation of the location. So, for you to make a good decision from this map, you can clearly see how it's way too close to any other existing buildings and homes, but generally, it's always advised to have a photo simulation, so that you can all can make a better decision to see what is the actual impact, what do people see. None of that was included in this for good reason, because if you were to include that, it would highlight how much of the impact this would be to every homeowner in this area, because it has to be installed in the central point of the community. The other parts on here was highlighting around how this would actually impact beyond the adverse aesthetics would be the actual value of the land. So, the applicant submitted information that's, that was based off a very high-level set of data. It did not include any specific cases of the houses and the details of the homes that they actually invested in here through a general appraisal report. In past cases of any of these kind of cell phone towers installations, appraisal reports do not get into the actual buying and selling decisions within these towers. So, the point here was that this appraisal, if you look at it, is too generic, it does not bring in any of the details around what people have invested in their homes. And a very simple example of this, if we were to have a home that was close to a cell phone tower, we install, we make $150,000 investment in that home, and then we sell it at a loss of, let's say, $100,000, that's not highlighted at all, it looks like we actually earned $50,000, when really the tower diminished the property value by $100,000. That's an important point to bring up, because what has been routinely brought up as valid and even more valuable evidence is real estate brokers in the local area to give advice of what buyers and sellers use to decide on selecting homes. As we highlighted in these letters, people are deciding and moved in this area based off the aesthetics, which would be lost from this. So, what we decided to do was go ahead and pursue two local real estate brokers in the area to make sure we had sufficient information on this. These two letters combined have 53 years of experience of selling and buying property in this area, and in this case, so Julian Harmon, she highlights that at least 10% of the value that she is seeing has been reduced from properties when they're close in the vicinity of any cell phone tower, especially in the 1,000-foot area. Chip Glennon, he also highlighted that this would, he's seen it from his experience over 34 years, this typically has 20%, 25% less value in these properties. This highlights earlier LDC point of that it has to have adverse impact of the cost of the property, this is, this is cases for that. These are all things you may use for supporting your decision, to highlight how this actually violates and diminishes the property values. And so, from that, we have a few other things that we want to make sure are just shared, so it's clear of what's necessary for, and what you can use to help make your decision, so it's in compliance with Missouri statutes, as well as the Telecommunications Act. One is that Point 2 in this document highlights that any decision, just as Carol Cowler brought up, of that substation, the cell phone tower can expand its size based off the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act, so whatever you permit would actually allow it to actually expand beyond that. So, this highlights that 155-foot tower, it would be able to be further expanded, so that expansion would not require further zoning, so this would be plus another 10 feet to a separate new antenna. That's a very important point to bring up, because usually that's a greater concern, especially if you're trying to zone a minimal requirement from a setback. The other final thing on here is the Point 3, which is a very important point, that's already been brought up before, is that the actual probative value, the data that's needed for you to make a valuable decision, it requires you to have all the necessary means of what we're kind of labeling it here as smart planning decisions. And so, it kind of hits on a later point in here, how AT&amp;T has to provide you with actual hard data to make your decision. General propagation maps or things like this, that can actually say, well, there's lesser signals or things like that, reduce the points of how you can understand what is the actual problem that's trying to be solved with installing a tower in this location. This highlights two cases of what's normally asked, both from FCC and now Congress, whenever they're asking about cell phone coverage, which highlights you have to have hard data, there's very low-cost means of doing that. Two examples that are shared in this document are having a simple signal detector that's driven through a car, that collects tons of telemetry data points at very short bursts of time, it can all be shared to highlight, here's the signal in all these different areas, and does this tower actually solve that problem? The second one too, from just having the normal, lower data collection, is actually having drop call results. AT&amp;T and other providers, it's extremely low-cost data that has high fidelity, meaning they can, with a click of a button, export a significant amount of data to highlight this drop called information, the location, device, and area, so you actually know what is the impact. Does it actually necessitate a new tower? Would a tower actually solve this problem? Furthermore, it even highlights, do you need a 15-story tower to solve this problem? So, after that, this highlights that how this, AT&amp;T has not given you any sufficient information to make your decision based off what is the actual hard data or data to understand, do you need a 15-story pole there to solve this problem? Do you actually, actually have it right in the center of that location, that property, which you're all asking, they're all valid questions, they should have more data to make that decision. They did not supply that. And even what finds contradictory to this, if you go in AT&amp;T's actual, look up that they have service, if you went to buy it, it shows it has full coverage in all this area that's located here that's also included as an exhibit as well. So, both of those cannot be true. AT&amp;T is trying to sell service in an area they claim they do not have service, which in this case, that would be contradictory. So, something's not true in one of those parts of the story. So, the, the final part that we want to make sure is shared out of this packet, is that when we highlighted the, the low cost of getting hard data and things for making your decision, was also the important point in Point 4. So, in making your decisions, so it's in compliance with Missouri statutes, as well as the Telecommunications, Telecommunications Act of 1996, is that how you document and make this decision is that you can use all this evidence, all this is valid evidence, meaning what we have is written statements from every homeowner of their adverse impacts, local real estate brokers with this extensive amount of background and research on both purchasing and selling decisions of what's at use to make a decision, as well as what is usually expected to show this is a defective application with not sufficient information for you even to make a decision if a tower would solve this problem. So, it states what kind of those requirements are, which essentially is you have to give a separate written statement of saying why this is denied, and the reasoning for it, which can include any of this evidence that we have included in these exhibits. And that's all the information we want to make sure is included in this memo, so I really appreciate all your time and patience, one, listening to these parts through it, you're giving your time, as well as showing your interest of getting more information to make a better decision. Because we highlighted, we have business impact, that those, that voice was not heard earlier, that we want to make sure these collectives who understand those in the community. We also highlighted local entrepreneurs who are trying to start a business, that this would impact every homeowner that's being infected by having a tower installed in the central location of the community that does not fulfill at all any of the matches. If you're curious about a simple scale example, that's in the part of our exhibit where we show the different scale factors, if you're unsure what 155-foot pole would look like to a ranch-style home, which is 15 feet, those are ranch-style homes in those area, it's, of course, 10 times that size. So, that's all we wanted to include on this packet information. Oh, that, I do want to add one last point on here too. There was some concerns about litigation, if you make a decision that would contradict what AT&amp;T want. This packet includes that information to highlight, there is no financial impact, meaning there's nothing you, if you were to go to litigation and say, "We deny this," there's nothing that they can actually get back on damages for this, it's just your own defense time, so it's servicing it. So, there's nothing you have to worry about, that would be at cost to the county for denying this. You have full power to deny this with ample reasoning, and of course, all the evidence we include here has past case law that supports it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chesser. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application? Yes, ma'am?
And Chairman, can I just really quickly, I just want the audience to be aware that the, plenty of zoning members got their packets, or the packets were available last Thursday, so I guarantee you, if it's in your letter, they're aware of it, I know they look at those letters, so they, they have seen those and read those.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Julian, 13901, Jesse James Farm Road, Carney, Missouri. I previously submitted the United States Appeals Court case for your review to uphold fine reasons for why I am now going to go after the state statutes in Missouri to update the security and the safety features of these cell towers that are non-existent and the actual health benefits or health deficits that, now I lost my train of thought, that will come from these. It has taken from 1996, the original Telecommunications Act, until this recent court, and to summarize, I will state, the court ruled the FCC must review the 1996 guidelines and justify why they should not be updated, both safety and regarding the FAA. I question the original acceptance of the conditional use permit application in its entirety for the following reasons. The agent for the applicant states AG as property description, location on application, yet Planning Zoning Committee states property is in urban services tier plan. Question one. Number two, need for this tower app states, and I quote, "High frequency of drop calls and no signal founds." We, AT&amp;T's own coverage maps available on AT&amp;T.com websites wildly, widely, and proudly touted very good coverage on our area. The app failed to provide any data to support claim of need, this could have very easily been vetted, the poor service claims, and no one attempted to do so. That's question two. Number three, the agent for the applicant gave conflicting statements of how this location was originally chosen in his original opening remarks and response to later questions in the meeting of June 7th. Tonight, we were all here to hear that we now have a whole new range of how this site was chosen. Question three, acceptance of site impact study submitted with the application and subsequent submitted after the original application are for completely different location, completely different situations, they're not even in the same zip code. So, I question why that would even be submitted in, with the original application, with all these other failures that are set by county requirements that he is supposed to provide upon the initial application. That, I don't know if it is a lack of care, due diligence, or simply being overlooked, but either way, that's question four. Agent for the applicant table of contents states, "The deed of parent parcel is attached." There is no deed attached. A printout of a county assessment with no source of info stated, provided printout is not a deed, another violation of the codes to, the county codes to submit the bid. Question five. Number six, I respectfully ask the PCZ to compare the previous CUP application this evening, July 22-141, which met all legal requirements of county to the permit, except the same request for the data which you all picked up on and have since requested. Comparison of these applications will prove my reasons for requesting the denial of the application in its entirety. That will prevent the need to give a basis for rejection on values to property, health concerns that are very much valid. The multiple county requirements of the conditional use permit have been basically shirked by the applicant, and I consider that disrespectful to you and everyone in our neighborhood. The PCZ worked to get the airport cited and application upgraded and improved to its current status, which provides much-needed tax revenue and jobs to our area. The tower most certainly will undermine both. I truly believe the integrity of Clay County Planning and Zoning will be irreparably damaged if this conditional use permit is approved. Thank you. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment that opposes the application being
Curtis Ross, 14105 Jesse James Farm Road, Kearney, Missouri, and I'm back. As I stated in the June meeting and in the updated letter submitted for this meeting, my wife and Michelle and I have lived at our home for 37 years. The value we place on our peace and serenity is priceless. There has been much said over the past two meetings, clearly, there are two very different opinions on the placement of the proposed cellphone tower. I'd like to offer my perspective on some key issues that I think the applicant and their representatives are downplaying and need to be emphasized to ensure they aren't overlooked. First, most if not all the applicant's documentation clearly gives the impression there is little to no impact to homeowners. How can an honest and ethical person say that our way of life will not be adversely impacted by placing this eyesore within less than 300 feet of anyone's home? Most people would not say so. However, the applicant and their representatives obviously are the only parties that believe there is no real value to our way of life. In the, excuse me, in the June meeting, Mr. Clocky said that AT&amp;T would not accept another location. Why? We've covered that a little bit tonight, so I won't go into much more on that. It seems to me that they're saying that just because they feel that they can say that. Again, there are hundreds of acres of farmland surrounding the proposed site that would not, would not be impactful to homes, businesses, or schools. Why does AT&amp;T get to dictate to us, the property owners, where the eyesore will be located? Secondly, Mr. Clocky stated in the June meeting and again tonight, that there is minimal to no sound emitted from the tower. Sound will only be emitted when the generator is running, he stated. How often will the generator be needed? Who is to say it won't be in the middle of the night, or that it won't run for extended periods of time? Also, how does Mr. Clocky explain all the research that states that there will be absolutely be a humming sound emitted from the tower 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year? My wife and I, and I'm sure our neighbors, would find this annoying to say the least, let alone the adverse impact that will have on the animals in close proximity to the tower. Again, this is, this is the applicant and their representatives totally disregarding and disrespecting the adverse impacts to the homeowners. Lastly, the applicant's real estate appraiser submitted a position paper saying that there is minimal to no impact property values. If you review the appraiser's bio on his company's website, you will see that he's a commercial real estate appraiser. How does that translate into residential appraisals? Having been trained as an appraiser myself, I can tell you that it doesn't translate really Is the, is the appraiser that submitted the report a member of our community? Probably not. We heard tonight that he, his report was based on appraisals done in the Kansas City area. Well, I think we all realize that Kansas City, the metropolitan area, is quite a bit different from place to place. So, does his analysis reflect specifically the market area around the Kearney area? Again, I, I trust more so the local real estate experts that you all have the information on. In that report, it says that the three homes closest to the tower will experience the largest potential adverse impact. Our home is one of those three homes. My wife and I are seniors, and some point in the not-too-distant future, we will need to rely on the value of our properties to supplement our income. Why should we be burdened with the potential significant loss to the value of our home? Is AT&amp;T and/or their subsidiaries going to reimburse us for this potential loss in value to our property? Probably not. Finally, we look to you, the Planning and Zoning Board, to be our county representatives to protect the citizens of Clay County from adverse harm. This tower is wrong for this particular neighborhood. Our, our neighborhood is the way we want it. Do the right thing and tell AT&amp;T they can't dictate such hardships on Clay County residents. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ross. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the, if you have something new to add, sir?
Just a quick one. Bob Julian, 13901 Jesse James Farm Road. Like I say, the real estate, what's the data that's been up before about the drop in real estate? If it's true, averaging out with these amount of houses, you're talking about losing a million dollars worth of tax money off of that, for this one area, the size of the homes and the value of the property. Once again, AT&amp;T's own website shows it's got excellent coverage there, and I believe the rep, last time, it'd probably be in the June meeting minutes, said that it was a four-mile area that they researched, that it could be put in that four-mile area, is what I was told, and I believe it's in the minutes of that, so that might be something else to look back on.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Julian, yep. Is there anyone else that would like to comment that opposes? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Lacey Weemhold. I live at 20017 Northeast Center on 40th Street. I live directly across the driveway that is being proposed, so I'll have a giant gate and chain-link fence right in front of my driveway, and 155-foot cellphone tower right in front of my home. And it will directly impact the sale of my home. People will be diverted from even looking at my home when they drive by and look at it. So it may not be in the sale price, but people won't even look at my home, so just want to make that comment. I can't talk as well as these people. If I did a great job, I wouldn't want to argue with him if I were you. But thank you all for your time, and I appreciate everybody taking this time to consider this plan and our time.
All right. Very well, thank you. Does there anyone else that would have something new they'd like to add that opposes the application? Mr. Clock, would you like to rebuttal or answer any of the questions?
A couple of things. To answer the gentleman's question, he was mentioning a four-mile radius. The four-mile radius was the coverage from the tower, wasn't our search ring? As far as the FAA is concerned, and the flight patterns and things like that, the FAA determines that we get a final FAA approval. A tower is never, never built before the FAA says you're approved to build that tower. They do their studies, we pay them to do their studies, they give us an official letter saying, you're good to go at that, at that particular height. As far as the, the application itself, I spoke with KIP, I spoke, I can't remember the gentleman's name, as far as getting everything in, contacted them numerous times, said, do you need anything else? Is there anything else you need? I don't, when I do a site, I don't just say, here's my information. I actually probably, I contacted KIP before I submitted my application, said, we're looking at this location. I don't want to surprise anybody with the tower. I never do. It never goes over well, and that's not my approach. If there was some missing information, trust me, I would have supplied it to KIP. So my application was complete as far as KIP was concerned, and we were done. He asked me for some additional information, I did provide it to him. The legal description was attached. I don't know if it got to be part of this application, what comes out, I don't know, but we send a separate legal description with our application. Photosims, it's not part of the county's requirements in their zoning. We can do them, that's not a problem, if that helps. If you want to see them, we can do them. Tell me you want them, I'll tell AT&amp;T they want photosims, they'll do them. As far as propagation maps, that is something we can do. I have to ask my, my customer if they want to make that part of public information. They consider that very proprietary. Once we give you that propagation map, other carriers look at it, it's a competitive business. Sometimes they say yes, sometimes they say no. If you want it, I will ask them. Can you give me propagation maps? Can you have write-up of what you need? What's on their, what's on their website as far as the coverage? They're selling their coverage, what's real? You know, I'm not, I won't stand here and split hairs with everybody. I'll let AT&amp;T give you the information if they want to provide that. They, you know, I don't know if they do, they will, sometimes they don't. They just say, no, we don't want that out. So it's their, it's a business decision for them. They find that it can really proprietary information. I will ask. I mean, I'll ask about the photosims, I'll ask about the propagation maps. They help, sometimes they help, sometimes they don't. They don't, they don't, the drive test data doesn't help anything, it's the propagation maps that shows you. That's how they get the, how they get their coverage models, from the drive test data. People looking at drive test data isn't going to make any sense, the maps will. They, they will provide a write-up, different colors, we miss, mean that the DC, or the coverage levels in different areas. They look for indoor covers, they look for, they're trying to cover, I'm sure a part of this is helping cover the airport, that is, is one of the things. The other thing they're trying to do here is cover, put these towers up for the growth that this county is experiencing. I mean, just like the, the last site, the, the one gentleman said, okay, they're going to build, come up and build 200 new homes. My first thought was, that's why they're putting that tower there. They have to follow the growth. I mean, you can't take a tower and say, here's a tower, and we're trying to cover this radius, and say, okay, move it north a mile, because there's a tower already there, probably. They're trying to build a network that, that they can sell, and that provides good coverage to their customers. That's all they're doing. So if, if there's something that you want, I have no problem asking the AT&amp;T provider. It's their call, and, you know, we'll give you propagations, I'll say, hey, they want propagation models, they're, you know, with an explanation. So, and as far as the sound is concerned, every piece of electronic equipment makes a hum, these hums are very, very, you have to be pretty much standing next to it. When generators kick on, they only kick on when there's a power failure after four hours. If a tower is knocked out of power, there are four hours where the backup battery inside those cabinets to keep that tower running for four hours. Once that is run out, it is an FCC requirement that that thing is, is what they call hardened, meaning that thing, that generator kicks on, and we have to have, I think up to 48 hours of fuel in it so that it runs, so that there is, so if there's an emergency, that towers go on there, and the generator will kick on. Typically, you know, if it's an normal power outage, or, you know, you have a storm, the generator doesn't kick on. I mean, if, if somebody knocked out the entire substation, I'm sure it would kick on and run for a day until somebody could fix it. So yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, I will get you guys whatever you want, you tell me what you want, I'll take it to AT&amp;T, and they'll, you know, I'll get with KIP and say, here's what they're going to, what they'll provide you, and we'll get it back to you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clock. Do the board members have any questions for the applicant? I'm sorry, you want to step up to the podium? Then we're, we're closing public participation. Go ahead and make it quick, please.
Yeah. Even though I disagree about the statement about coverage and his search zone for a tower, so you, tonight you say that that's supplying, the communication is four miles of that tower. So it's... Please direct your questions up here. So in that case, is AT&amp;T wanting to put one of these towers up every four miles across this country? You know, if he's saying that's a coverage zone, it's four miles, now that's something to think about. They need to update their technology.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Julian. Well, the, we talked a little bit earlier about the 120 days from the date of application, and the application for this conditional use permit is dated April 7th, so the 120 days is basically going to be August 7th, so it's not feasible to table this to request the hard data that Mr. Clocky's volunteering to supply.
And Chairman, can I jump in there a little bit?
You bet.
So this, the date of the application is April 7th. There were a couple items missing from the initial submittal. Now, keep in mind, a complete submittal for planning and zoning is what's required in the Land Development Code. So there's been a couple items discussed that aren't required by the Land Development Code. So that initial submittal on April 7th was kicked, the applicant was notified, the next application deadline was May 2nd, so that's when I would consider the 120 days starting if legal counsel agrees. If, if we go from the 4/7 date, we're at 89 days from when it was submitted. If we go from the 5/2 date, we're at 64 days. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Well, I would call for, if there's no further discussion from the board members or staff, I would call for a motion to either approve or deny the conditional use permit for the Kearney East Cell Tower.
I'm going to make the motion to deny. Reason being, I think the Land Development Code for Clay County needs to be reviewed and changed. This tower's way too close to these properties over here. It's, it's unfathomable. If I lived right next to it, I couldn't, there's no way I'm approving that, at least I'm not personally. I mean, I, I'm moving to deny.
Okay. Do we have a second? So we have roll call vote?
Marvin Davis. David Rotis.
Deny.
So, do we need to do the yes/no thing? Or are you going to hell with going here?
I'm comfortable with a yes/no on that motion for denying. So I hear denying the, and you're voting with the motion.
Correct.
So I'm okay with, as long as they're going to change it, I don't want to back it for it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Terry Griffin. Mike Brinkley.
Aye.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve.
And Chairman Tom Decker. So tie in effidence denial will go to County Commission on the 20th. We're still in session.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
I'm sorry.
So this goes to County Commission on July 20th, is that correct?
Yeah.
July 20th.
We're still in session, we have another case to hear. Call the Planning and Zoning Department, please, or I'll, I'll be happy to talk with you after the meeting.
The commission will hear this case July 20th, 2022, at 3:00 PM in this room. All the cases heard tonight will be heard on July 20th. The next case we're going to hear this evening is June 22-137A, and could we add a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman, we'd like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
So I'm going to be really quick, we talked about this last month. This, in my view, is correcting an unintended circumstance in the Land Development Code. It basically puts dog training centers in the home occupation code. It, it, it classifies it with a kennel. So a home occupation code allows certain businesses to be run out of the home. A dog training center does not include any boarding or any outside activity associated with the dogs. So this is specifically to allow this as a home occupation inside either the residence or an accessory building. It limits them to six customers per day, so basically one or two classes where these people bring in a dog, it's inside the house, they train the dog, however they train the dog, but as the code is current, currently written, it's classified under a kennel, and it would not be allowed as a home occupation. So we're recommending... So we're recommending approval, and it's just a couple changes that you could see on the screen. And we specifically say that all the activities has, have to take place inside a structure because the reason to have a home occupation code is to limit the effects on the adjacent property owners. We don't think this affects the adjacent property owners. Be happy to answer any questions you have. You'll remember last month, the, we had a lady that spoke in favor of this, and that's kind of how it became into fruition, basically.
Now this, would this come through P&amp;Z as a request for a conditional use permit? Or would this just become an occupation license?
No, if this is approved, they would just get a, a home occupation permit through my office. They pay a one-time fee, and they're allowed to do it, but they're, they're bound by those home occupation criteria.
Would you like a motion and to vote on this this evening?
Yeah, yes, please.
Well, I would call for a motion to approve the amending the home occupation, animal care, and boarding as outlined in the proposed LDC text.
I'll move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Rule call vote?
And I just want it noted that there is no public left for public, for public comment. So-
Oh.
But that's fine, I think.
Okay.
Marvin Davis.
Approve.
David Rotis.
Approve.
Terry Griffin.
Approve.
Mike Brinkley.
Approve.
Brad Scarlett.
Approve.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve.
Motion carries.
While we're still in session, I think this would be prudent. I have a question for Mr. Graham on a past case. This is on a conditional use permit that was issued to J&amp;K Animals in April of 2018 and was reviewed and revoked in April of '21. This is July of '22, and we've heard that she's still operating as business as usual and with no-
She's in location, she has a stay in place. So it's in location, start trial. Or do you need to secure time, right?
Uh, I just, permission to speak freely, sir, but-
And I'll tell you that before it gets resolved, we'll be sitting right here.
Before it's resolved, it'll come back through here. The, the reason for rejection was complete disregard for the conditions set forth, set out in the conditional use permit. Not minor, complete disregard. And I tell you, it, it, it kind of makes P&amp;Z look unprofessional. It's like KIP and his staff have the responsibility to follow protocol for, for the land development code and the comprehensive plan, but they have no authority to enca, to, to enforce a, a non-compliant CUP. The judge ought to do 200 hours of community service for hearing this. Okay. All right, well, I appreciate that. I would call for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Can I say a couple comments real quick? Cases- No, cases from last month were approved by county commission, just FYI. And I want to thank my staff, we're shorthanded, we had a lot of cases. So I'm sure there's mistakes in the packet, but Angie and Shane did a good job, so thank you. That's it. Please adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Can you come back next month, Mr. Graham? You're more pleasurable than Andy.
I think Andy owes you dinner.
We call him Andy Ruff.
I've been texting him while we're here, I hope I'm making him up. I do, I mean, he's in Europe somewhere, I was like, 2:00 in the morning there.
Oh, yeah. I think this may have been a record.
It's close.
It's maybe been a record like that. It's been close.